All right. Good evening. It is six o'clock and we are going to start this weekend Cooperative School Board Meeting for May 11. We're actually opening with the public hearing. Per RSA 198:20-B, the So We Can Cooperative School Board will hold a public hearing to discuss the acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated federal and food service grants. And I'm going to turn her over to Mr. Chamberlain to start the discussion.
Sure. Stephanie, thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to hold a public hearing. It's really good practice to get feedback and inform the public about any funds we are receiving and how we are expending those. And Ms. Facy will go through the process about this, but the school board has been designated through an action of at a public meeting to be the agents which are allow them to receive and expend. But transparency and working with the community is considered best practice. So Amy, thanks for all your work on a wonderful memo with soup to nuts on how we do that, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So yes, you have in your board packet a pretty descriptive memo with a chart with all of the grants that we're going to be looking at tonight. And the reason we're doing this is, as you know, the voted budget was nineteen million, eight ninety-seven, eight hundred, and the district is not allowed to spend any more than those funds unless we accept additional revenue. So that's what this process is really about because we budget on a gross basis, so we're not able to exceed that dollar amount. So the amount that was approved for special revenue or grants in the budget was two hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred. In addition, since the ballot, the board has approved an additional one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars in grants and donations, and those have been presented in the consent agenda at board meetings, and the board has approved those. So tonight, we are looking to have the board review and approve any grants that are over and above what was already approved. So if you take a look at the grid in your memo, in the packet, you'll see the listing of all of the grants that with the amounts that were approved, the amount that we've actually received, and the balance is the difference that we need the board to review and approve. So some of these grants are just additional allocations, or in one case, in IDEA and preschool, it was less than we actually were anticipating.
Yeah.
Yep. Sure. Yeah.
You need to turn off that one little light. Is that, is that thing on? Oh, yeah.
There we go. All right. And some grants are for prior years. So in addition to the grants that we received for FY23, if there are funds that were unexpended in a prior year grant, then those can roll over, and you'll see those amounts as well. So if you look at like the IDEA and preschool, you'll see we received less than anticipated for the 23 grant, but we had some leftover funds in 21 and 22. For Title I, we received more than anticipated. Title II as well for FY23, and there are funds that that we had received in FY, in FY21 and 22 that had not been utilized in those years. So I won't go through all of these. But I would say that the grants that are shown here in FY23 actual, those may, those aren't just sitting there unexpended and don't have activities related to them. They just haven't been approved to be used over and above budgeted amounts. So a lot of these grants Christine does work on, and there are activities that are associated with these, with these, with these grants. So it's also important to note that the exception of the ARPSR III, all federal grants are not allowed to supplant budget costs. They're only allowed to supplement activities and work that is being done by the district. So we're not able to take these funds and just apply them to something that we would have, that we're putting into the budget. So the only exception with that was S R three. So we were able to actually use some of those funds to do some activities that we, that we might have budgeted for. You'll also see the local grants and donations listed. So the Spalding Trust, we're not anticipating any change in that. The Saber Startup, we received a little bit more than anticipated. And the Health Trust and Gaskus donation, those are remaining flat as well. The two food service supply chain grants, those came in, the first allocation came in late last year, and we've been notified that we're going to receive a second allocation. Those are able to be applied to milk and fresh produce. So that was a nice grant that we're able to receive to supplement our food service program, but it's specific as far as eligible costs that we're able to apply that to. And we have just about used the entire food service supply chain as looking to apply that to some costs for food service, which is great because we're always running a tight food service program, and we want to avoid looking for funds from the general fund if we can. We haven't received the supply chain grant too, but we have been notified that that's coming. So I'll take any questions on this?
Any questions?
Question. This great comment is this great. I guess the question is, are any of these that were not approved, meaning they weren't in our radar, will be recurring? So that next budget cycle, we would see some additions to places where?
Yeah.
And then the converse of that is, are there any one timers that will, that will disappear? Can you maybe give us a flavor for that?
Yeah, IDEA, we see all the titles. We see, I think S R is done. The Modern Band was a, was a one-off. The Safe Grants, I think they're a one-off for now, but they may come up again. We're, you know, we're notified that we're able to apply for those, and, and we did that for all the school districts. The Spalding Trust is a standing, Saber Startup is standing, Health Trust is standing, Gaskus is, and the Supply Chain, I don't know. Those were sort of a surprise. So so that's, but as far as this, this process hasn't really been a formal process in SEU 39, so this is something that we're implementing new so that we can provide as much transparency as possible on all of the grants that the district receives. So we're playing a bit of catch-up, going back to some older grants. I will say when we, when we spend the grants, we go back to the oldest year for the grants, and we spend that down first and then move forward. So that's, that's how the program works. There is a pretty rigorous accounting and application process for these grants for approval. So the funds come from the federal government, but they are administered by the New Hampshire Department of Education at the state level. So we apply for the grants. We're required to receive approval on all of the activities. And then we need to report out monthly to them on where we are as far as expenditures and completing of projects.
Thank you. Yep. Any other questions? As it's a public hearing, we can ask for any public comment. If anyone has anything they'd like to ask about the, the grants that are going to be accepted tonight? Don't see anyone. Is anyone online?
And I guess I would also add, if we don't spend all of this, because what we'll be asking the board to do is approve up to an amount, then we would be needing to review these again in next year. So because we were, we may not spend all of this. We probably won't.
Oh, so, yep. Okay.
So no one's initiated public comment on it?
Okay.
Follow me, John.
I mean, I guess
So we're going to
Probably won't spend it all because
Probably won't spend all of it.
The purposes are so limited that we, we just don't have the programatics to
Yep. And, and some are multiple-year grants as well. So, but we want to have the ability to spend up to that amount. But then we would need to have another public hearing next year because those funds would be sitting there for FY24.
Okay.
So
Oh, it's good.
Yeah.
It's good to have a grant bigger than your need.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I mean Christine can maybe add a little bit about some of the, the title grants and how that works and why we have some funds left over.
Yeah. So one over every year. Here's where we don't feel that either we have enough funding to actually fully utilize the grant, or if we feel that there's not a need for a set program, then we are actually able to roll all of those So Title I doesn't have to be extended. We really look at needs where things might be coming from other sources and make the best determination for use of those funds. For Title II, those, that's a two-year grant, so we sometimes intentionally maybe don't spend the full grant down if we have needs that we know are going to exist in that following year. Title IV is a challenging at times. It is a little bit broader, but sometimes difficult to get approved. It's, or it's to support a well-rounded education, so it can't be used for something narrow like math or science. Or to supplement and enrich programming. So that is also a two-year grant. So we are looking, and I've been working closely with Steve on that too. To be able to, we never want to give access to, but we always want to, you know, utilize it in the best way possible. And if it can roll over and we didn't have a need in that year, we'd look to be utilizing the following year.
Okay, just, just a couple of examples. Title I, that would cover the extended learning summer work, right? And I remember we were talking about that before, and there's somewhat complicated calculation as to who
qualifies.
is eligible or not eligible. I don't know how rigid that is, but to the extent there was a need identified, there were surplus funds, you might increase the enrollment
Yes.
to satisfy the student need.
Correct. Yes, which we often do, and that number flexes each year, often based on the funding we have available.
Okay. And then for the well-rounded education, are there restrictions on the time and manner and place for that? Like, does it have to be within the school day, or could you have after-school or evening activities or weekend or just any other time?
That one is also including wellness. So we're actually looking to work with John Dowd in expanding our ropes course. And our elements there is what our need is for Title IV, which is wonderful to have an opportunity to expand and provide unique opportunities for our youngsters there. So that's the type of great use of a grant, because sometimes that's difficult to get through in a supported budget, but with this kind of, with this kind of funding, it's, it's one that one of those buckets is acceptable. So we're working with one of our teachers and developing that grant.
Okay. And, and the programs, so if there was a ropes course program, if there was a weekend experience, that would be
Absolutely.
Doesn't have to be limited to the school day.
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we will close the public hearing. And we will go into opening up the the full So We Can Cooperative meeting at 6:14 PM. Well, before we move on, we're going to take a vote on the public hearing, so it's not forgotten or lost in the middle of everything. So I would like to have a motion under RSA 198:20-B to accept and expend up to two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven dollars from federal and food service grants.
So moved.
And Ms. Zimmerman, seconds. We've already discussed, so we'll take a, oh. Yes, hold on. Hold and pause on that. Christie was able to call in and zoom in. She's not able to be with us tonight. So Christie, can you please, I say whether you were unable to be here tonight and whether you are alone?
Yes, I was unable to be here tonight, and I am alone.
Okay, so now she did hear, so she's able to participate the vote. I just didn't want to interrupt the beginning part of the of the, the meeting. So now we'll have to take a roll call vote since Christie is not in person. So Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Vieux, yes.
Grund, yes.
Lisa Zimmerman, yes.
Daniels, yes.
Glover, yes.
Glover, yes. Okay. And Ms. Peters?
Peters, yes.
Okay, that is has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for providing that information. That was, that was good. That's the first time we've had a look at that.
Yep.
So appreciate that. Okay, before we
The appreciation.
Yes. So before we, before we do public comment, the one thing I want to do is, Frank, do you want to come forward and have a seat at the meeting? Because I, this, this whole conversation involves you. And whenever you speak, I want to make sure that the mic is on. So if you want to just press that button in front of you, so it's ready. And would you like to introduce yourself so everyone knows who you are?
Sure. Frank Bowden, 18 Dodge Road, Amherst, New Hampshire.
Great. Thank you very much. So this evening, as everyone knows, we had a resource reconsideration report with a recommendation to keep the book Gender Queer in our library. There was an appeal to this, and when we looked at the policy, there's nothing that describes what the next steps are. So instead of huddling behind a door and trying to decide what the next steps are, I'd rather discuss those here. Set a date for an actual full hearing, so it is not buried in a school board meeting agenda. Make sure that Mr. Bigno can be here, and we will proceed with that. So what I'd like to do is just have a discussion. There's some ideas I had of how to hold the hearing. I'd like to do it almost as a DOE hearing where we have, we probably will end up in the auditorium potentially. Depending on how many people we expect to give, give any public commentary. Give Frank a chance to discuss and present anything he would like to before anyone else has, you know, we start giving any feedback. We'd like to hear from the public, and then the board can have a discussion after that. And it's, I think it's important for us to hear from the community as a, you know, part of the conversation is about how the community sees the resource. So I feedback on that. Any ideas of things to add? I think Christie, you had a couple ideas. We mentioned about a sign-up sheet.
Right, right, right. Sorry. I'm working on two ideas with sign-up sheets, and I was on the wrong one in my mind. Um, yeah, I thought that it might be good to do like we do at the state, like they do at the State House, where as people come in, they can sign up to speak or do like we normally do with the speaking, but we could also have kind of a sign-in to express, but I don't know, I don't know, because we were, it wasn't really a fully formulated idea that I'm ready with. Sorry, Steph.
No, that's okay. Okay, this is what this discussion's about.
It was just sort of the idea that people might be able to weigh on an opinion if they think the, the policy was followed correctly and the, and the decision is the correct one, or if they don't think the policy was followed correctly, and it's not the correct decision.
That not for against sort of
Yeah, the, so the idea being that it's not people saying the same thing over and over and over again. If, if everyone's thoughts have been expressed, then they might also just add their opinion to that conversation, but
that was an idea. Thoughts?
I like that idea because I think it does avoid the repetitive nature. I think we have to have some limit on the amount of time each person speaks because this can't become a fifteen-hour debate. And I think we need to make sure that the discourse is done in a way that is not going to be harmful to any of the students who are potentially impacted by the subject matter and the book. And I think that is incredibly important because if we're having a discussion, it could be harmful to the students who might view this book as a resource, that would be very very, could be very detrimental. And that was raised, I think, in one of the emails we received. We've received several emails in support of and against. And was not necessarily something I had considered beforehand, but that struck me when I read that as something we need to be cognizant of.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, if they want to have a sign-up sheet and people wanted to sign up, that's fine, but you know, we have a common goal, a recurring goal of improving communications with our community, and I think to hold people to that is maybe disingenuous. It goes against our goal. So if people show up and, and they want to speak, then they should have the opportunity to be heard. Probably will need time limit for first comments, much like at a deliberative session, I suppose. But, you know, I don't know this idea of repeated comments. I mean, if there's people who feel strongly one way or another, and they want to say similar reasons, I don't think we should censor them from providing their opinion. I think it's important feedback for us to know whoever shows up, where that balance of that room sits on the issue, and anything that we do to artificially limit their participation sort of goes against our, our principles there. So I'd be very careful about putting artificial barriers in front of our public on this important matter.
Go ahead and respond.
I don't, I don't know, John, if you've been up to the State House to testify, but, but the, the idea, I think, what I envisioned is that anyone who wants to talk certainly can talk. But if you're sitting there, and I mean, I've gone up, I've signed in, I've signed in to talk, I've heard three people say what I was about to say, and I was like, you know, when it came my turn, I just said, never mind, I'm all set. It's, I have nothing more to say. But there's also usually a big list where if you don't necessarily want to talk, but you want to register your, your opinion, instead of everyone standing up and saying, yes, I feel the same way. Yes, I feel the same way. Yes, I feel the same way. I want to vote this way. I want to vote that way. You just, you just write down, I'm signing in in support of, I'm signing in opposed to. So I don't think, at least my intent was not that the sign-in would prevent anyone from talking, but the people at least initially were thinking, I just, I just want to sign in, voice my opinion here, but I don't need to be heard verbally. It was a way for, I guess, more input than you might get if everybody was required to stand up.
Okay, I mean, sure, an option for people to do that is, actually helps our goal. They can, they can have their voice heard. They, if they, if they do voice there, they should put their name and town of residence as if they're providing public comment, I think.
Yeah, it would be
They want their voice heard, that it will be in public. So, okay. Sure. Sounds like a good option for people.
Okay. Mr. Vieux?
I was just going to say that I would support a process similar to what you get in, in the legislature where you sign in to speak, you're given, we have to decide whether they get one shot or two. Speak for a limited amount of time, three minutes, four minutes. They can speak a second time if we decide. As long as they don't repeat the same points over again. I would draw a limit on repeating the same points that have been made over and over again, that we encourage people to say, to say that they support the points that have been previously made and make any unique points of their own without being repetitive, or we'll be here until two or three in the morning.
Okay, so it seems like there's a general interest in before again, sign up. Make it easy. And, okay. I'm okay with that. Are there any other thoughts of how you, like, just like the general framework I, I gave, like, we want to hear from Mr. Bowden, want to hear from the public, we want to hear, and then we'll, and then we can deliberate if that makes sense.
Two, two comments on that for me. One is, there was a reference to D N H, what are they now? D E? Oh, Ed, U D.
In, yeah.
Guidance for their hearings, and maybe we could have that because there's probably certain elements of that that are not applicable here. I mean, witnesses, testimony, you know, other evidence. I mean, not to prevent people from providing something that's not already in the record, I suppose, is, is, they should be allowed to do that. But I think one body that we should hear from is the Resource Reconsideration Committee. I mean, maybe their works, if they, if, is that a choice? Or should they have the opportunity to present? I mean, their work is here in our agenda packet, so maybe it speaks for themselves. I, I don't know, but it is their decision in the report that, as I understand, is being appealed. So in terms of sort of opportunities to speak on the agenda would seem to be Frank and the, and the committee or the committee chair, or whoever the leader of that group is. Yeah, those are my, my feedback.
We can, we can reach out to the committee and ask them if they'd like to attend and say anything, or if they feel that the report speaks for what they want to say. We can leave that up to them.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
I'm only doing this because I know we're, it's hard today, it's making the minutes. I, I think it would be useful to encourage them to, because, I mean, we could say Mr. Bowden's appeal speaks for itself. And, but that assumes then that everybody who's attending has read the report and read the appeal. And I think at the offset, outset, it would be useful to have just a brief overview of this is what the decision is that we reached, this is why I disagree, and I'm filing the appeal. Just again, so that everybody participating is, who may not have had the time or the ability to read the agenda packet knows that.
Yep. That's good. So Frank, are you good if you want to speak that night as one of the first?
I'm sure, yeah. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I, I do have a question, though, about the policy of informing the complainant. Is that going to be changed so that way it's an automatic? We're going to inform the complainant instead of me having, or anyone else that wants to complain?
Yes.
We have to reach out?
Yes, a hundred percent. There, there are definitely a few things. This is the first time that I think any of us have worked through this policy, and we've noticed a couple of things that included, like, why would they have to request it? That hundred percent. So that is, that needs to be changed. Yes. And I don't want to change things in the middle of this process. But as soon as this process is closed, it's going to Policy Committee with a few recommendations.
Thank you. And your feedback on that would be appreciated if you have additional feedback.
Yeah.
From having experienced it would be helpful as well.
Well, it's just you waiting around and trying to guess the ten-day limit and all that, and to figure out, okay, this is, you know, is it working days? Is it?
Yes. Yes. Agreed. There, there are a couple of things I know we all felt were a little need to be changed.
It's like a dry run sort of kind of.
I know.
Now, is that, is that committee, is that a permanent committee that sits for a certain amount of years now, or is that, because I didn't read anything like that inside the policy?
Yeah, so
Or is it, you know, it's going to be different every time?
Yeah. Well, so I think what we're going to, so the policy, the way the policy is written, is this committee gets formed, and it sits for two years. The problem is, just no one's appointed anyone for this committee before because it's not been brought up. So I, this is one of the changes I want to make personally in the policy, is that at the beginning of the school year, this committee is appointed. They, then we, the problem is, if there, if there are students on it, we can't necessarily have them sit for two years because it could be graduating. So they have to be a year. So we'll have to discuss whether everybody's just one full year. And then every fall, we appoint them as a new committee. So it's, this committee is always ready, and it's not this scramble of putting people together because I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay.
How this came about. Yeah, so that's one of those tweaks that absolutely has to change.
As far as days at work, it'd be Thursdays would be beneficial.
Thursdays are, are best. Okay.
And not, you know, Memorial Day, because I, I don't think that's going to generate anyone coming. So
No.
I'd probably say maybe June 1st or June 8th or something like that coming up. I, I know you guys got a meeting on the 8th, so maybe not so good.
That meeting is getting changed, actually.
Okay.
We have meetings changing to the 20th. Because that's what it originally was scheduled for. So it is open.
There's no other district meeting? No other district meets that time?
Yeah.
So maybe We can certainly tentative the 8th. First, we have the day before graduation, so
Yeah, we're going to be busy.
But we can tentatively schedule the 8th and make sure the calendar is clear, and then we'll get in touch.
We'll firm up, and then we're going to, yeah, we'll make sure to fully advertise it to the, the entire public, both Monver and Amherst. And we're going to reach out as many ways as possible. So as soon as we send it out, if anyone can help forward the information, we're going to send it out as, in as many ways as possible.
Perfect. Is it going to be between six and eight, you know?
Most likely.
All right.
Yeah. We find that six o'clock, we can usually get people right after work.
Right after dinner. Yeah.
Right. It's, yeah. And you start too late, then it goes way into late into the night. So if we can start at six, if that works for you.
That's perfect.
Okay. Great.
On the 8th.
On the 8th.
Yep.
Great. And we, I think we'll, we'll let everyone Great. And I think we'll, we'll let everyone know there's going to be some signups when they walk in. So if they want to come early, they can help sign up for that and we'll make sure a full hearing is given, because I think it's the appropriate way to do it.
We'll plan for the theater.
Yes, I think so.
Perfect. Anything else for me?
I know, I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time and coming.
Want me to leave this on?
You can press the button. We're going to have public comment here. Thank you.
Can I just say, what, what are there, if we say we're going to follow the ed protocol, we should, we should say specifically which?
I didn't say we're following it fully, right?
Well, I know.
But we're going to try and base some of it on.
Right, I guess the question is, what, I think would be helpful for the transparency piece, if we had the sections and verse that we were going to follow and the, and the ones that we were not going to follow. Just so that everyone's clear on where our, or, or say, we reviewed the, this is what we're going to do. Step one, Frank is up. Step two, the committee is up. Step three, what's next? Step four, who does what, when and how?
Well, that's what we were trying to lay out here a little bit.
Get it, but I guess if we could memorialize that and publish that with the notice.
And I think part of this needs to go into the policy. Personally, there needs to be
Yes.
A process, because why reinvent the wheel and why
Yes.
struggle over this every time?
Yes. Yes.
Is there something more, John, that you want to make sure we talk about or get covered, other than the, you know, we're going to meet at this time? Someone from the book committee will present. Frank will present the basis for the appeal, then we'll take the public comment in the format that we've discussed. Is there something else that you want?
Maybe if we have to decide whether or not there's a mechanism to present additional evidence, I think.
But I think any additional can be brought up in discussion from community or.
Well, so long as they know that they, they can. Let's say there was a critique or something out in the world that wasn't part of.
But that's, that's part of public comment, right? They can bring all that forward.
Yeah, okay, so then I'm okay with that, yeah.
You can submit a written comment if you want, the materials you want, any
Right.
whatever you want to submit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd encourage people to email it to us ahead of time or have it in written form, so they don't have to read it verbatim.
And then I guess there's another procedural piece, which is a timeline for our decision. I mean, if we receive a ton of new evidence, it's not really feasible to properly consider that evidence in the night of the hearing. So there may be a timeline after the hearing by which a decision is made, a written decision is made and published. Of course, potentially, I'm just, you know, sort of thinking it through.
Like, if we, I mean, I don't mean make the final decision, but if we find out that as we start discussions, you know, we now have a stack this high of material that we need to look at, then we, then we could make a decision that we're going to take X days, we'll figure out what it's going to take, take X days to review it. Or we can be on a Friday, and then we'll get the decision out by this, or maybe we find.
Well, our decision also probably needs to be made in a form of emotion like we usually do with a fore and again, so we'll come out as a motion.
That makes sense.
Another date.
Correct.
We have a scheduled time, either we have, I don't know, have a serve our next meeting or whatever date, but I think we can figure that out.
Based on what we hear that night.
We're not able to get through it that.
Yeah, I just don't want to extend this out too far, but that's good that we have another meeting on the 20th, because that gives us time to, at the latest, to get hopefully a decision out. Because I don't think, I don't think we want to carry this out. I think we want to make sure that we hear, we consider all the information and form a, form an opinion. And if there's no new information that night, we could have deliberations that night and come out with the opinion.
So.
We should be planning on giving the time.
Yes.
That we can stay that night.
Yep.
And make the decision that night.
Yes.
But we understand that circumstances may prevent that from happening.
Hundred percent.
Um, in order to give everything.
You know, we have to fly by the little seat of our pants, because we've not been through this before. We don't know what the feel is and what it's going to look like, but I want to make sure we, everything is consolidated before we make a decision.
So we should note that there may be, but I guess what the legislature calls an executive session at that time, or it may be delayed. That should be explained, so people aren't waiting for a final vote that may not happen that night.
I don't, yeah, and I, again, this is, it's really hard to say right now, because we don't know if there's going to be other evidence that we, that we need.
Say that there's potential that we would, we would vote on it that night, but we could delay it.
And vote on by the 20.
Any other information?
Mr. O'Keefe.
With legal counsel, what did they say about the process that was suggested?
They suggested that we could follow something similar to a, like a DOE, like manifest hearing deal.
And having it in the public forum, including deliberations. And then the decision is actually issued in the public forum?
Issue, you issue the decision in a form of emotion, so you can issue it. It needs to be voted on in a public meeting, right? So then you can issue.
Has anyone reached out to the petitioner to see if there's some sort of negotiated thing that we could do here to protect maybe that individual's child from accessing the book?
I believe there, there was some discussion about that.
And then the request for hearing was still requested?
Okay. Miss Daniels.
All right, all right. I, I actually, I think that the report that was already done by that committee was really well done. I'm, I'm wondering what kind of evidence we're expecting, you know?
I, I, yes, good question. But, but part of the process, because because of the concerns brought up, part of it is looking at where the concerns are as, you know, what is harmful to a minor? That's the definition, the kind of, so you kind of have to hear a little bit from the public and take the feedback and see what, what they bring forward as as what they look as substantiated.
I understand that.
That makes sense?
Yes.
Yes. So we don't know, but it's, they, absolutely everyone has a chance to bring forward information.
If I may real fast, each individual item is reviewed independently regardless of what happened prior. So I don't know if that's necessarily true, that we're trying to create a pattern here of whether or not a book would be approved or not approved. Whether or not we're going to oversee or overstep the authority of this committee, it's this particular issue was presented to this committee with a finding. That particular finding is now being appealed to this particular body. We tried to enter into a negotiated sort of process, which was declined, and that's why we're actually having to hear it. So if it decides one way or the other, that doesn't prevent any other member from the community from bringing another book
Correct.
before this body, completely different, or even maybe a hundred percent identical set of scenarios where the community is against that decision or against.
It's a whole nother process, right?
Then comes back to the board. So we're, don't look back and say, we previously ruled that a book like this.
No.
It's independently, it should ever.
Hundred percent, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry if that wasn't clear, if I, if I came across that way. No, no, each, each, each time it's brought forward, it's a completely new look at. This is, this is for this hearing and this process right now is about this particular appeal. But another appeal could come forward on a different book. Yeah.
Formally, I was never asked about any special conditions for my child. I read about it in Union Leader, but I wasn't offered anything formally.
So you're not offered to not have your child take, prevent them taking the book?
No.
That was missing one, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Not formally.
Okay.
Can I request that we?
Can we ask the call, what do you mean by not formally?
I wasn't sent anything in writing on email.
Did someone informally ask you if there was something like that that could be done?
No. I, I had a.
There was no discussion with.
I had a private, I had a private conversation with somebody. But there was nothing formal, it was nothing that a board voted on, nothing that administration came to me with. I have, you know, just email traffic back and forth between Ms. Grund and the superintendent and whoever else. I think there was a librarian on the traffic, but.
Okay, so there was discussion with Ms. Grund, the superintendent, and librarian about options. You just, you don't consider it to be a formal.
No, because, no, because never, no one actually spoke to him about it. That's it. No one spoke to him directly.
No. The only thing we discussed on email was when we're going to have a, you know, this meeting and then what was going to happen at this meeting, to expect coming up with dates.
Yes.
That's it.
Yes.
No problem.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
So if I can, and with all due respect, I don't want to put you on the spot in front of many people in the public forum. What I'm going to ask is, is that superintendent communicate with the petitioner to see if this is something that can be negotiated in advance to save him the time, the aggravation, and the energy to go through to, to, to the next step, to see if there's a resolution that could be good for him, his family, and his.
Sure.
We'll have that conversation.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay.
One other piece, so I had said a written report. You said in motion. So the question is, do we back up our motion with a written statement that similar like we might do in a hardship process or something? So where there's a rationale, there's a basis for the issue and and the reasons why the board collectively decided what it did, with a majority view, or however that shakes out, and maybe there's a minority view as well. I don't know how that might work, but there's something that's separate just from a motion, or, or each member, like we do in normal decisions, has their statement and their opinion, and it's on the record in the minutes and it lives in that way.
Right.
That's the question.
So that's a good question.
Did you say before, Stephanie, it was a public? The discussion, the deliberation is in public?
Yes, it is. It's, it's going to be a standard, like, like a school board meeting. Everything's going to be on the record.
Public discussion, the meetings and the reporting become.
Become the.
The record.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? Just want to make sure we got everyone on board. Okay.
And I guess to that extent, if any board members have a you know, write out their statement, it might be helpful for Danae so that she communicates, she has an opportunity to communicate that with, you know, accuracy and precision.
Okay. Speaking of Danae, I'm going to come sit next to you just so I'm closer to the, uh, okay, recording if she needs my voice later.
Good. All right, are we concluded? We'll move on. All right. Thank you very much, Frank. Appreciate you coming.
Oh, one last thing, when you're putting together the, the notice and have sort of the procedures outlined, would you circulate a draft for feedback to other board members so that we have some preview of what's being considered and have an opportunity to add our two cents and be helpful in that way?
I will.
Thanks.
Set that up. Thank you much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so the next thing is public input, one of two. We have a number of people here in the audience. If you would like to have public comment, please come forward to the microphone. You'll, first person will need to press the button so it turns green. And you'll need to say your name and town of residence, please.
Susan Chato, I live in Mount Vernon. And I just, I wanted to start with a couple of questions, which is, we've heard some talk about transparency with the board, but it does sound like you came into this meeting predetermined to have a public hearing about this book. And Mr. O'Keefe may have asked a question, I couldn't quite hear, that sort of got at this. Are you legally required to have a public hearing? Are there other policies in place, like for someone who's appealing a curriculum reconsideration item? Are public hearings mandated by that policy? Or by the state or other, other things? Because it does seem like you've made that decision before getting the public input on what the next steps should be. So maybe you have an answer that sort of would clarify that for me.
So I, we don't normally do a lot of public input, but let me answer that. I think it's important with this issue that it is given a full chance to be heard by the community and not buried in the, in an agenda. So I did come in with the idea that I would rather hear and give the entire community a chance to discuss it than bury it and say, we got to move on, we got too much stuff sitting here. So yes, did we come in with, did I come in with that? Yes, because I want to make sure everyone's heard.
Right. And some of those people who are going to hear are the students, and I heard you issuing some concerns about the impact of this. I mean, we saw recently in Wyndham Raymond that students were reporting an increase in bullying during the public hearing process about this very book. So I guess, I mean, you're the board, you'll make your decision on, on as you see fit, but I, I want to air my concern about there being a public hearing and whose voices are being protected. The complainant has had his, you know, has had a seat here at the table, so, you know. Yeah, I guess that's it. I just want you to recognize the full impact of the decision that you seem to have come to the meeting with.
Appreciate your input.
Should we briefly explain that we have limited options on when we can deliberate as a board in public and private?
Yeah, but we don't have to have a full hearing. All right.
Hi, Lisa Eastland, Amherst. Recommendation I would have, if you choose to go forward with a public hearing with time and management, all of that, is considering having the Sowhegan Cooperative School District moderator be in charge of that kind of stuff, because if there's a lot of comment and things going on, I think as a board, your time and attention should be spent doing that, not somebody monitoring their phone or having the, the time go off. So you might want to see if Ellen is available, or whoever it is.
George.
George. Yeah, George Bauer, sorry, wrong school district. So see if George is available. The other thing, I have been at a meeting like this before, and they've had the moderator or somebody have a screen up. And when general themes were discussed, it got put on the board. Because if somebody comes in late, maybe they don't know that somebody's already talked about X, whatever, but they see it on the screen and they may go, oh, it's already been addressed. I don't need to do that. So it's just kind of a way of keeping track of topics that have already been brought up. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room?
Julie Smiley, Amherst. And in, when you guys are considering this whole entire process, I have a couple of requests for you to take into account. We all know that school time and resources are, you know, important. I want to make sure that they're carefully considered and respected. Our paid staff and volunteer board members have many pressing demands on their time. And it's vital that they can prioritize appropriately. I believe there's already been, what, 184 page document issued in response to this attempt to ban books. And these book bans requests are increasing dramatically across the country, not only involving gender issues, but race issues. Is this going to be an ongoing time suck for the school when there are way more pressing priorities that, for our children's education? And I also caution against this appeal process adding traction and attention to a small minority of people who are expressing wishes to ban certain topics. I do object to others dictating what my child has access to. So that's a consideration. And I also think one of the crucial points to remember is that there are real children behind this. I have a transgender nephew myself. These attempts at censorship have a profound effect on our students who may not be of typical gender or of typical sexual orientation. A recent study by the Trepper Project showed that half of transgender youth, that's half of transgender, transgender youth have considered suicide in the past year. And one in five transgender or non-binary youth attempted suicide in the past year. I just ask that we consider attempting to minimize these what comes across as an attack on somebody who is struggling with their gender identity at a really you know, a difficult time in their lives as a teenager. And this can have a profound effect, hearing the public attack their gender or their sexual orientation. So I would also caution against a huge public hearing and making it be a circus. So that's all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Tara Pompio. I am a para here at Sowhegan, and I read this book and I really liked it. And I would like to thank you guys for bringing it to my notice because it was wonderful. It was kindly written, it was compassionately written. And I want to applaud the committee that I think did a great job studying it. I do want to say that if we do have this meeting on June 8th or whenever it might be, I would like to offer myself to any kids here who have something to say. myself to any kids here who have something to say about it, but um with the understanding that like they have been bullied in other towns, I would be happy to read whatever these kids might have to say if that's appropriate. If um Ralph, you would tell people that I'm up for that. If that's allowed, then I would be happy to do that and read whatever they have to say in the public setting. Thank you.
Hi, Matthew Black, um Mont Vernon. Um, I'm just curious about the I'm curious about the decision to follow this particular process, like if if the idea is that the the general process as kind of defined is that there will be a review committee that will review the the material and write up a report. Is your idea to, like, because I imagine anytime that the answer to the review is that the material will be kept, the person who made the complaint would probably appeal it, right? Because they're obviously not going to agree. So I'm not sure what the point is of having a review committee if the every single time next step would be to have the board hold a large hearing and the board make the decision. Why wouldn't you just have the board make the decision in the first place?
So again, it's not usually not not a lot of give and take, but I do want to do want to make just the the comment that it would be an assumption that they would always choose to keep it. I you know, who knows what the review committee would say on every single, every, any other book that comes forward. I mean, I.
Well, no, sorry. So the point being, if the review decided to, it's like it's a, the idea is that it's a first step, like a a little mini review where things may be rejected, but then if they're not rejected, it would go to a bigger review. I'm not sure why that would be the process. Why not just have the bigger review?
Yeah, again, the the policy, we we know there's tweaks to the policy. We're learning. We're kind of learning as we go a little bit.
Right, but it sounds like you're tweaking the policy now by.
No, we're not. The policy does not speak to how we're supposed to follow through. We're just supposed to read it. Can I? So.
I think.
Our policy does not state on how the board makes a decision on an appeal.
It doesn't mention appeal at all, right?
It appeals, it mentions an appeal and it stops there.
Oh, it mentions that appeal is a thing that can occur.
Right. That's all it says.
Okay.
And I think our our process should be whether we should overrule, is is there enough evidence in one way or another to overrule or support the
The recommendation.
The recommendation or the decision of the committee.
Right.
So we're not starting over. We're just
Correct.
looking at whether or not there's evidence to uh nullify their their decision or.
Right.
Right, and and so just and so decision, so there is no published way that you're supposed to do that review, that that that.
Nope.
Appeal. Then I would like to uh put out my opinion that the process that you're choosing is probably not the right one. I think blowing it up to be a much larger issue by having a very large public um hearing. I understand the idea that you want to, I understand and I appreciate the idea that you want you know, minority opinions to be heard and and and, you know, but there's a, there's a certain point where giving more legitimacy to a minority view when there already has been review and there has been a large document, there's a lot of evidence behind the document could be detrimental, could be the wrong decision to make. I, that's what I would think, that it's probably the wrong decision to make.
Well, what, what we're doing is really just providing public comment period for a regular for a meeting, which we have to do by law anyway. So this isn't a special hearing. We're just allowing, we're just accommodating that we might have a lot of comment that night.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say two, two quick things real quick. One from my, and this is just my personal perspective, because obviously you haven't heard us debating on this and voting, but from my perspective, I think the underlying review is incredibly important. I would not have had the time or the knowledge to go find different resources, who's rated the book for what grades, what different publications? I mean, all the information in there is information that we now get to consider and that wouldn't have been available to me if I was doing this on the first level. So I'm incredibly grateful for the committee that I think did a lot of the heavy lifting in that regard. What we need to do now is part of the appeal process is look at it with kind of our eyes and considering all of that, but any additional information and then making the decision. So from, I don't see it as, I guess I see it as an incredibly valuable step. I don't see it as me being like, all right, well, that goes in the garbage. Now tell me what's going on, you know? Right. And then two, one of the difficult things that I think we may have lost tonight, I just want to comment on really quickly, is that we we have to do a lot of this stuff in public. Right? So even if we might want to, I mean, I expressed concern earlier also about some of the same things you all are saying, that this is going to be detrimental and harmful to some children who are listening to and seeing this and feeling like they're singled out and further and, you know, those sort of things. But we're not allowed to just like meet at my house and have a quiet discussion about this. And so our option is either have a hearing at a scheduled time where people come in, which yeah, it's going to be probably a big thing because a lot of people may show up. Or do it at one of these meetings. Um, but it's still going to become that. I don't know if you saw like on the Facebook page, the answer was no, no, don't, you don't have to go out tonight. Tonight is just a decision. I saw one of my Facebook pages. Tonight is just a decision. I know what the process is going to be. I would expect that if this had been on the agenda tonight, we would have still had the room packed and everyone wanting to say something. So I don't, it's it's more a timing thing as far as when do we have it? And instead of having our meeting go till three in the morning because we have our regular business separating it out. And I do, that does have the unfortunate effect of of escalating it up some. I understand that. Yeah.
Yeah, my my opinion is that it's it's not only that. I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
And I am not for a moment suggesting that you should do anything privately or quietly or anything like that. I'm just saying, anything, anybody could have a problem with anything, right? Any committee, any budget committee decision. And any one person could walk in and say, I don't agree with that. And maybe there's a lot of, maybe there's maybe there's a lot of anger about the issue. Maybe there's not a lot of anger about the issue, but I wouldn't think that the amount of anger about the issue should dictate the process. You know what I mean? So like if if I had a problem with any decision that any committee made and I said I would like to challenge that. I imagine if it was a budget issue, you wouldn't do it quietly in your house like you or anything like that. You would listen to me. And agree or not agree, but I feel like lending credence to the, in my view, minority complaint by making it an entirely separate meeting is just the wrong decision. I think, you know, why not treat it like a person who was complaining about any other decision that a that a council made or that a committee made. But I I just think it's blowing it up to, it's it's legitimizing something that I don't think should be legitimized.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate your input. Okay.
Uh, Ralph Vanderbein, I live in Amherst. I want to speak to the point about students who might be offended by this issue. Uh, I think that in the real world, which students do happen to live in, uh, they hear things that might offend them and upset them. And that's a part of growing up, that's a part of becoming literate, that is a skill that students actually develop here at school. We develop debate skills and being able to tolerate ideas that might challenge your own. Students who do choose to listen to this sort of meeting, I think, have that sort of mindset where they're expecting things that might upset them or surprise them. And if they feel like they maybe need to rebut against something, they have the opportunity to. I also feel that these students might be hearing some things that make them happy and uh hear some support for their community and the things that they might have read in this book. So it could be a positive experience for these students, hearing allies come to the meeting and speak on this issue. Uh, so I am in support of the board's decision to possibly hold a public hearing in this.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it. There, there's always a second one at the end of the meeting. Yeah. Anyone else in our audience?
Just had one more thing to ask real quick about that, Paul.
Yeah, come, make sure you hit the green button.
Reference that deal about parents being able to restrict their kids from getting it. Does that apply to all parents?
Yes, I think actually in the policy, I thought, was that they, any parent.
A parent.
A parent.
For your own kids, yes.
You can.
Right, but.
Resource for your own.
People listening can request that also.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, is there anyone online who?
Uh, no hands up.
Okay. All right. I want to thank everyone um for coming this evening and for your, for your input. It it is important to us to hear. Moving on, ah, student handbook presentation. Sarah, come on forward.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Gillam and I am Sowhegan's Dean of Students. Thank you, uh Steve, for welcoming me here. And thank you, Board, for welcoming me here as well. Appreciate your time this evening. So tonight I'm presenting to you our proposed student handbook for the 2023-2024 school year. Um, in your packet, you will find um the draft copy of the handbook itself. It's a number of pages. I um will not spend all of my time going over all 47 pages, but I'm going to give you just the highlights of them. Um, my um my goal for this was, um, as I uh came into the uh Sowhegan School District last year, I took, one of the first things I took a look at was the the student handbook. Um, and I wanted to make sure as I was editing it uh for this upcoming school year, I wanted to make sure um to to reflect on my account at um walking into the school for the first time and taking a look at the resources that were available for students. So I took my perspective as being new into the building and kind of approached that as the way a student would, a freshman would um while coming into the building. So I wanted to make sure we had um an accessible place, a digitized place for students um as well as their caregivers uh to just have a handy roadmap for their daily student life, uh their academic and behavioral expectations, all while adhering to Sowhegan policy and SAU 39 policy. Um, this is by no means exhaustive, but it's going to definitely be, as I mentioned, a roadmap into frequently asked questions um and concerns and questions a student or caregivers might have. Um, so the evaluation process, again, this, uh, as I mentioned before, it began at the beginning of the year and it's me taking a look at what was presented to me and what from a student's perspective and from a parent's perspective. Um, so from that, um, I took what already existed and I met with the leadership team throughout the first semester of the year. Um, and I put down my ideas. I thought, okay, that what can continue to be in there, what could be improved, what could be elaborated on, what could be um consolidated at the time. So the leadership team also did the same thing uh with me. And from there, I took my ideas and brought them to community council um a number of times and met with a subcommittee during our evening meetings. So that way I could get uh community council input uh with some board members and some student members and some um community members. So that way I had a really good understanding as to what the community wanted in their student handbook for their kids um uh as they came through. Uh, from there, I then uh created a draft, again, that you have, and I shared that recently. Um, it was approved by the Community Council Executive Board. Um, some amendments that I did put in there. Um, something you'll probably notice is that I tried to make it much more appealing, the previous iterations. It was, there was a handbook, um, but it was very plain, um, very just black and white. So I tried to make sure to utilize a picture of our school on the front copy um to represent this as our school. This is what we look like. And then I went into taking a look at the headers and footers to kind of make sure there was a place because I knew the end result would be digitized. I wanted to make sure there was an ease of making sure you can get back to the first pages of the book. As you'll see, the uh hyperlink in the bottom and the footer, and I also wanted to represent Sowhegan and our school logo there at the header. So that way, regardless of where you were in the handbook, if you dropped it on the floor, and of course, all the pages spread everywhere, you would recognize, oh, this is our handbook, this is the page number, et cetera. That was kind of lacking before. Um, I updated uh the table of contents to make sure they're all hyperlinked. So once it is formally published, you'll be able to click on any of the headers or subheaders and it'll bring you directly to what you are looking for. Um, uh, easy to navigate sections. I cut and pasted and moved around a bunch of repetitive sections and consolidated them into big sections um to make it less repetitive. And I also wanted to make sure I was taken into account, kind of, I tried to walk in that student's life throughout the day, throughout the year. And what they would be coming into first, I tried to imagine myself walking in through the door. What do I need to know about first as I'm coming in? Who is who? Where do I go for this? Where do I go for that? Um, the next thing I also put in here on on page six. Um, I updated the SAU 39 portrait of a graduate prior. Um, it was the uh Sowhegan portrait of a graduate image. I updated that to include the SAU 39 portrait of graduates, be more streamlined with the entire district. Um, and then I finally, once this is um ready to go, I will make sure it's updated and streamlined on our current webpage for ease of navigation. There are some additions in the student handbook, um, hyperlinks, as I mentioned. So not only is there internal hyperlinks for the table of contents, there's also additional hyperlinks that brings the reader to either Sowhegan policy or SAU 39 policies. Um, and I'm open to add more um or edit as needed. So I do recognize that things change over the summer. Um, those would have to be changed and that would be uh easy to do. I also put in um such as on page 10, um, I put in frequently used phone numbers. For example, uh, main office, student services, uh, phone numbers, administration phone numbers and frequently used numbers such as the registrar, the nurse, our school resource officer, special education department and campus coordinator, to name a few. Um, and I also recognized um in terms of putting those phone numbers in, I also, I left specific names off, so that way um, you know, the the person wouldn't be saddled with, I don't know what this person's name is, but I know the the SRO, right? So I made sure to kind of leave the names off for now. Um, I also made sure to include uh the daily schedules, our typical daily schedules as reflected on pages seven and eight. Those are our typical days, our regular advisory day, uh, gold and black, our late start day and our special schedule, early release as needed. Um, anything more specialized than that, we would just continue to update on our boards and on the internet through social media. Um, once our school calendar is locked in for the year, I will also make sure to add that in as well. Um, cell phone policy as passed by community council this year, that has also been included as well as information related to the student access cards as related to our security discussions as they continue for the rest of the school year and into the summer, that will, that is already included in here. And it will be updated as needed if the language needs to be modified as things get settled over time. And now I am open for questions and discussions and/or suggestions.
Okay. Let me open it up. Anyone on the board? Mr. Vieux?
Just had a quick question on the Constitution section. The last few hand handbooks have like just had the preamble, but the Constitution requires that be distributed to all students. Is there a way to put a hyperlink in there for to the full text of the Constitution?
The answer is, I can definitely do that. And I also made sure to put in there a copy of the Constitution in its entirety is available from my office is uh my office and as well as on the the website, but yes, that can definitely be hyperlinked in.
I want, while we're on that, and with Ralph, the community review board and J board were combined, right?
Uh, yeah, and I spoke with Sarah about this.
Okay, thank you.
It it might not be combined in this edition, I don't believe, uh, but I did speak with Sarah about this at the last um executive meeting. Yeah.
Thank you. Just a couple of tiny things. One, thanks. Thank you for all your work on it.
Thank you.
Um, purely, I mean, this is like a really picky little thing, but um one of those things I noticed that if you can check the headers to make sure they're like consistent in size. The main reason I noticed it or I thought about it is on page 16. We've got like one size font for helping friends with chemical dependencies and then student visitors. And then the mental health resources is a much smaller font. And I saw that in a couple of other places. That's page 16. So, and I mean, it stood out to me because I thought mental health resources should actually be in a bigger font and it might be worth, I don't know, can you add anything to that mental health resources section? Like crisis lines or if they're not comfortable talking here or something like that?
That's a good suggestion, yes.
Um, and so, and then the one other thing, oh, two quick things, valedictorian selection. It has the word salutatorian, salutatorian.
Salutatorian.
Salutatorian. I've always said that wrong in there, but I think it probably needs to be incorporated in each section, you know, right? Forwarding with the title of valedictorian and then the salutatorian will be the second highest. Um, because it doesn't really, it doesn't say how that second spot is filled or, you know, so just for just for clarity there. And then the very last thing was.
Move on.
Oh, yeah.
Could you give me that page number really quick?
Sure, sure. It's page 13, valedictorian selection process. And it's same process for both. And it's same process for both of them. It's just the what, you know, I just said it, it's not, it probably should be valedictorian slash salutatorian process, and then throughout that paragraph, adding that in. And then, and then, and then I was a little unsure on the next page. Page fourteen, promotion and retention of students. We've got this discussion about they have to earn a course score of two point oh or higher on all competencies, or else they're not gonna get credit. It just, it's, it feels like that goes up with and is part of the discussion on page twelve of the grading system. You've already got a whole section on if it's a C minus or less, there's no credit, this is what happens. And I got to that, I was like, wait, is this different? Isn't this part of? So, those are my only couple thoughts, but I thought it looked great. Thank you for your one comment.
Thank you for that, actually.
Anyone else have comments? Mr. Glover?
Yeah, I really appreciate your process. I had, my mind kind of works like yours, looking at these things. Logical flow, no repetition. So that I really appreciate. So some feedback for you. I don't see, at least in the table of contents, graduation requirements maybe be something to include. Why is this not scrolling well? For the counseling? Oh, there, 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 beside. So the counseling, I mean, maybe this, as the programmatic's for counseling get evolved into whatever their, the vision is, there may be additional features there, other than withdrawing from school, the college process, career planning, and college visits. I don't know. It's a sort of a question mark. I know on the horizon is some new vision for the counseling program. I'm not sure exactly what it may be new. So maybe put an asterisk on that as that gets figured out. I have a note about, oh, student resources. So we have two, the Library and Information Center and the Learning Commons. I guess, seems to me like there's more than just that. Maybe advisory should be mentioned in the table of contents. And maybe it's a student, or a student resource. Or there's, you know, academic supports in the curriculum. People can choose that as, as part of their class. Saber Flex Time, what is, what, what a student might contemplate using that time for, are some examples that come to my mind that might be considered student resources, or at least deserve a place somewhere in the table of contents. There's a separation of athletics and clubs and activities. I think they're all, I don't know what people think about that, but maybe that's one chapter. And athletics are subsections, clubs are subsections. So it's one thing to go consider, and then within the, the parent piece, you can find the subparts, as opposed to separating clubs and activities from athletics. I mean, they're all managed, as far as I understand, from our athletic director. So they all kind of funnel up to the same adult organization and management. There's not a mention of, like, our Latin honors programatics and, and what that entails and what one needs to do to be a part of that. Maybe that goes with the valedictorian and salutatorian piece. Those are some things that I caught. And then my final is, you're speaking of your headers, the, I think the proper name and people should remember is the Sauvigan Cooperative High School. So maybe you could insert the word cooperative at the header. I think it's important to, to remember that that we're built in partnership. Those are my comments and feedback. Thank you again. You're welcome.
I've never seen any real literature, Sauvigan Cooperative High School. Yeah, so I need to look into that before we, before, yeah, we'll look into it. But just let me double check on that piece. So, but we'll let you know, Stephanie, I'll let you know as we dig into that.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the feedback. It's a living document, you know.
It is. This is, this looks really good. This is like nitpicky stuff, you realize.
You know, that's totally fun. That's what I was anticipating.
This looks really good, honestly. It's nice.
I've been staring at this for nine months.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to make sure that I say thank you for all the work. I know this must have been quite a process. Make sure that I say that. My one question is in the grading system section on page twelve. You have the course score and then the letter grade. Would it be possible to put in how that would translate onto a transcript? It would be a four point oh, or, you know, one extra column?
Like a weighted GPA?
No, because your class, your course score is a, is a one through a four. So if you get a three point seven seven to a four point oh, that's an A plus. But on the transcript, it would show up as a four point oh, or, or if it's weighted. Yeah, yeah, I don't know if we need to go to another, a fourth column for weighting, if you go that far. You have to have probably an explanation of what courses get weighted.
Yeah. It'll get complicated, but use your judgment.
Yeah. All these are just suggestions. It's not-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think you can do another one of what the weighted, well, yeah, I guess it could be, what would this be if it was a weighted class, right?
Well, I don't think you need a column. I think if you have the description, which I thought she had here was-
There is a program of studies that also holds additional academic information.
Yes.
These are companion documents, but this is like student life, and that's the academic life. How much we merge, you know, sort of lead to you. But there is the academic handbook, if you will, called the programs.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that has much of the information around grading and Latin honors and things like that.
And I just don't want to have any confusion over a three point seven seven to a four point oh. How is an A plus a range, you know, that's supposed to be a four point oh. So it's kind of confusing if somebody looks at it real quick and they're not really familiar with the grading system.
How does it actually get translated in the end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could I tag on to that a little bit? This is not a comment on your work at all. It's just the concept of communicating to students and their families, you know, and the student handbook is a good place to do that, I think. Really, you know, coming in as a freshman, or even before, maybe if you're a family, people can come, they could go to this resource, and they could really learn about the avenues and pathways that a student could take. You know, whether it's a CTE, I don't even know if CT is even mentioned in here, or, or why they might want to strive, or other resources like online learning and V-Lax, and how students can set a path and use and leverage the school for their, for their personal goals so that they can come out and actually paint, we can actually help, they can help themselves paint the portrait of a graduate with our help. So as an objective for a student handbook, that's what I, that's why I have put all my comments. I see common themes in some of the other feedback as well, so that it really is a one place where you can really, if you actually take the time to go through it, know, like, okay, I, I, they want me to go out and explore. They want me to diversify. They want me to achieve. They want me to strive for excellence, to take advanced courses, to push myself and set goals, like, that kind of theme. I would like to see woven into something as seminal as the student handbook.
I would just like to thank you for formatting the Title IX section so clearly. I know that was an issue previously with the student handbook didn't have much information on that, so I'd like to thank you.
So I'm just gonna add, you know, seriously, thank you. This is, it's great to see a refresh and a relook and a redo. Have you tried off its mobile friendly?
So interesting topic. Last year, I, when I first came in, I came across John Berry's Wix website. And I know that we have been steering away from the Wix. And so the first thing I looked at was, there was a, a mobile website related to the Wix website. Now, as for this, right now, this kind of looks the same on the computer versus a cellphone right now. So I haven't looked into it, looking at it through the Wix. I was kind of playing around with the older version of it. I would have to, to work with a few other folks to get it more mobile friendly.
Yeah, because a lot of people are doing this on their phone and get, I get comments all the time about, I can't read this. It doesn't come up. It doesn't, or it doesn't even load, or it doesn't. It, things are in different funny places overlapping each other. So if we can just look at that, that would be awesome. One comment that John alluded to in the, where we talk about the college process, I think it's on page fifteen. I'd also definitely would like to add the section that talks about a CTE process. And I know that falls under the program of studies, but it is something I know we're, we're trying to make sure people understand there are different pathways. So just a, a quick definition of working with your guidance counselor and finding that is important as well. Page fifteen, in that whole section, I think it is. And then the only other, the other comment I thought of is under academic integrity, and I don't remember what page it's on, so chat, GPT, AI is a hot topic. We know there's an academic integrity issue. Is it worth adding a comment about using, not, like, we don't even know if we have, we don't have a policy necessarily around it?
It is ongoing, right? And I, we have just had a series of meetings internally about chat, GPT, and AI stuff. We're not prepared to add it into the handbook until we have more conversation at a district level and a school level formalize it. And I think what we need to do is, is just really appreciate, as of November of this school year, really no one was talking about chat, GPT. And we came back from winter break, and it was there. And so we've responded accordingly and, and started to educate our staff and our faculty with a series of meetings. We're gonna start to roll some things out to the student body towards the end of the year, so when they leave, they know that work will be done with this over the summer. It is considered summer work for the Sauvigan staff. And I think as the summer works, that's when you're gonna kind of jump in. Is that, is that, is that where we left it?
That's exactly kind of where we left it. And also, I appreciate that comment. And I can't really go in and change that too much, because it is Community Council approved. And so I didn't want to change the language in that yet, but we have been addressing it as a, you know, case by case basis. And over the summer, we are going to be continuing to address it with the faculty and staff feedback that we've already received, student feedback that we've already received, in smaller pockets. It's, it's a thing. And we have to figure out how to work the best with it. So we need to figure out as a staff, as a community, how to best handle it moving on, because it's here to stay and it's here to live on.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
I do hope as you work into the summer on this project that you do keep including more student voice, not just as pockets, but you know, as you mentioned earlier, this is a Community Council issue with the student handbook and procedure and academic integrity. So I just want to make sure that there is an open discussion with students about this sort of issue, because so far, students have really only heard about it from me, regurgitating what the school board has said, which is not a lot.
Thank you for that.
Awesome. Anyone else? Sarah, thank you very much for all your hard work on this. Great, appreciate it.
Thank you for staying tonight.
Yes, please go home. I've been here all day. Okay, moving on to reports received. We have principals report up first. Does anyone have any, Mike, actually, let me ask you. Is there anything you want to address upfront on your report?
No, you can, it's a full report. As the year goes on, we're in May, there, there's a lot of happening as we conclude the year, as we plan for the end of the year events, and as we prepare for, for the next school year. So you do see some, you know, updates and some forecasting out. You see, you know, just an indicator of how busy it is. You see Roman New Rule Number Six, like, other topics that, you know, was a section added in to this board report based on the previous board meeting. And, you know, other than that, like, I just draw people's attention to the events at the end of the year. It is full, right? And, and so we have a lot happening, and the staff is, is really engaged right now on making sure senior year ends well, and ends in a meaningful manner, and it ends in an accurate manner for, for the seniors, and that we are celebrating and recognizing all the good work from the students, you know, in their academic classes and co-curriculars and athletics. But super full. I would say today, I highlight if anyone had the ability to go to the track today, between three thirty and five thirty, we, we did host a unified track meet today, and, and that is always a, a neat event when you get to bring in multiple schools. So we had Hanover and North, our school, I believe Wyndham was here, you know, just kind of, you know, had a bunch of kids, and so that was good stuff today. And it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And I just want to recognize that all the partnerships we had with the PTA, the school board, has been really well received this week. And, and so I do appreciate it in my, you know, from where I sit, so.
Great, thank you. Yes, I want to say, before we take any questions, I just want to say thank you for everyone who helped, who, everyone on the school board for participating, helping out with the teacher breakfast. It was, it was great to see them, their smiling faces, and they were extremely happy that they had breakfast provided along with coffee. So appreciate everyone's support on that. All right, questions?
Great. So first of all, thank you very much for putting in the vandalism and the bullying piece. And I also saw in the Saber Spotlight, there was a specific category in your presentation. It was Monday, right?
Yes.
That addressed that. So thank you very much for actually doing that. It's something that, that I continue to feel is important. I noticed on the agenda that we don't have committee, committee reports, but I do want to actually share a couple of things that, Sonya doesn't know this yet, but she'll be working with me on, in, in terms of Mount Vernon. And we're excited to hear that we actually have three student of the months from our great small little hamlet on the hill. And we already put stuff in motion to, to recognize those folks. Our library is going to be doing a nice little display inside the library with their, their pictures and their bios and the write-ups that your staff created. So people are going to be able to see that when they walk into our library. They're also going to be pushing it out in the library newsletter, as, as well as with the write-up that the faculty and staff actually did. Spoke with the Mount Vernon General Store, and effective tomorrow, we're gonna have some sandwiches named after these kids.
Awesome.
So go, go up to Mount Vernon General Store and buy, buy the, the, the actual sandwiches for them, so they can recognize that. And if you can communicate that to them directly, yeah, I would greatly appreciate that.
Pick which sandwich this is?
You can, yeah, well-
You know, we're gonna give like a beef sandwich, vegetarian.
All year long, and we finally got some of our burning kits that, that came up, so it's awesome.
It's awesome.
And then we're also gonna be pushing the recognition out to those kids in our town newsletter that goes out on a monthly basis. That was actually sent out. I submitted that release to them this morning, which I see you on. So that's gonna be getting some well-deserved recognition for, for our three kids. And then last, but certainly not least, and this is the part that Sonya's gonna be helping me on quite a bit, is this year, for the first time ever, the town of Mount Vernon's gonna be recognizing our high school seniors. And they're gonna be walking in our spring parade, which is coming up next weekend. And so Mike did a great job at inviting the entire senior class. I know my son signed up, which is great. So I know some kids are gonna be doing it, and the theme this year is seventies disco. And so if anyone is interested in attending, recognizing our hard work of our seniors.
The seniors' thank fest, I got the costumes.
It's all, all tied in together. And it's just a great way for our kids to receive some feedback from, from our community in terms of the hard work this year and then not being recognized. And I hope that you're able to attend as well, because we have some ideas for you too.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And one thing I forgot to, you know, include in, in overview is there's gonna be a graduation walk during graduation week. And we had that included in, in the presentation this, this Monday. And we have a schedule where the, you know, the senior class will be going to Mount Vernon, and then Clark Wilkins and AMS in the morning of, I think it's Thursday of graduation week. And, and then they'll have graduation rehearsal. So we're really excited about that. And, and so a lot of good things happening. And like I said, I hope it, it ends well and people feel really, you know, appreciated and valued and recognized, so.
And I know my community feels extremely proud that we have the opportunity to do these things. And it really allows the folks that are up on the hill to feel more involved in this place, in this community that, that's doing all the good things that they're doing. And recognizing some of our Mount Vernon kids in our community is, is always a great thing. So thank you.
No, appreciate that. Mr. Vieux?
I just want to thank Mike and Dana, who's not here, for a really good year. We had, I think we had a great year this year. I think a lot of the improvements, the grading system and, and things like that were well received. And I think we've done a great job overall. We've had our, our hiccups on the- Done a, uh, great job overall. We've had our, our hiccups on the board and things we've had to, to deal with, but I think we've had a good year. Um, one thing I want to know is are you gonna be able to top last year's graduation speech?
Add some themes and some ideas. You gotta start, you know, I got people who have a lot of opinions of what it could look like.
I, I just.
We'll see.
Last year's speech, if you haven't heard it, that there's video recording of it somewhere.
Very good.
It was probably about us moving, uh, graduation speech at any level that I've ever heard. So.
Appreciate it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments for Mike?
I have just a couple. Just the grading and reporting piece, I just confused you about, um. Earning credit through the summer, there are sentences, if the final course score is below a one point three zero, earning credit through summer. School is not an option. Is that because to earn that credit, you need to retake the whole course? Or what, or what's the dynamic there?
Let me look how it's forwarded.
Yeah, that's, uh, page one fourteen on the agenda packet. Section two, the very top of the page. And this was, this was the idea of, I mean, it's connected to the sentence about sending a communication, communication home to the, to the parents. So just wanted that, whatever that communication.
If you're below a one point three, you know, that is not at, at, for a course, like summer school is not gonna be an option. It's gonna be about retaking.
The course.
Course, yeah.
Okay. And then, okay, so I guess then my feedback would be if, if that's the message to the parents, then make sure that the.
Yeah.
Not, not only is that not an option, because the only option at that point is to retake the course.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, I think when they communicate that out to, to students and parents and staff, I think it's, uh, in far greater detail.
Yeah.
But yeah, no, I appreciate.
Excuse me a little bit.
Yeah.
And then, let me scroll back down. I, I appreciate the, the, as well as, um. As Stephen O'Keefe about the adding this, about the vandalism and the response and the contributing factors, very interesting. Just to note, like, compared to last year, we're kind of at the same level. It's not like it's tripled or, or anything. I'm not saying it's not a big deal, but it, it, it's, um. It's good to see that it's not, you know, three or four or five times more than last year. Um, and I'm glad to see as well that, uh, cost to repair it is, you know, it's not nothing, but it's not thousands or tens of thousands of dollars. Um, so that's, that's good. And, um. So what are you, what you're doing, hopefully will continue to work and, and damage, if any, will be minimal.
Yeah, and I, I would say, you know, what is, you know, vandalism is, is vandalism, but some of the things that we see, you know, with the photos is, is. You know, the extra soap put out, you know what I mean? The, the toilet paper, you know, you know, just pulled out and left, you know, that's in, that absolutely increased. You know what I mean? So I think there's a line between like, you know, that type of stuff, which we don't, we consider, you know. Lower level vandal, and then there's like real substantiated vandalism. And so I do think, you know, to be honest, there is an increase in, in, in that type of stuff, that type of behavior. Um, but as far as like the, the substantial vandalism of like the ripping of sinks, ripping of equipment and breaking of valves. It's about the same, but there is an increase if we're being, you know, real.
Okay.
So.
Well, maybe that context didn't come through.
Yeah, so I just wanted, I wanted to add that in in conversation as we, as we talk about it. That's where you get the pictures and the videos flying around, you know, so.
Got you. Okay.
John, can I just interrupt?
Yeah, yeah.
So I know the ninth grade teachers worked very, very hard this year with our ninth grade students. And knowing that there's not tenth grade teams next year where there's that team of people working together, looking at the teachers or looking at the students. And kind of like discussing, making sure everyone's got their eye on issues happening. What's our thoughts on our tenth graders? Do we feel confident that they are, are growing, they're maturing in the way that we hope that they are? Uh, you know, coming from ninth grade into tenth, that the team issue is not a bigger concern.
Yeah, first, you know, I'll be very, very kind of a firm with this. You don't need a, a formal team to, to talk about kids. You know, we have systems in place through student support team, through the counseling office, through, uh, the academic support, through the learning comments. Through various mechanisms to talk about kids. Uh, you know, that whole team thing was to give students more options so they can have their pathways to graduation. And it gives kids more flexibility too. And, and, but I will say this, you probably heard me say this, that, uh, I do think students. In all grade levels present a little bit younger as in regards to academic maturity and, and, and behaviors and socially than in previous years. And we are definitely trying to set up the systems to support some of our students. And, you know, with that, I think it's getting better, you know what I mean? Uh, you know, as far as like, as we see kids get into tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade, you know, I do think coming in from AMS to ninth grade. To at South Eagan is a substantial lifestyle change. You know, to go from that environment to this environment, the way the school operates with an open campus, with, you know, a lot of like freedoms. That's a, that's a different thing. It takes a little bit of used to. So, um, we have been reflected on our systems and structures at the ninth grade level and tenth grade level. Uh, you will see a constant kind of like evolution of that. And you will see some structures kind of added to our school to. To monitor, you know, some of the academic and, and social behaviors.
Thank you.
So.
Sorry, John.
No, no, that's perfect. No.
Without getting into too much details on the, on the specific structures that get put in place. Um, I'm just gonna add my, please, please don't lose that freedom though. That, cause I, well, it might be difficult for some kids to adjust to that. And I think it's important to figure out how they adjust. There are other kids that, like my older daughter, the ability to get up, walk away from class for a minute, walk around quietly. And then sit back down without having to ask was just a game changer for her when she got here. Um, and, and in a good way. I mean, you know, it, it, it was really, you know, she used to joke, I think my teachers at AMS must have thought I had a tiny bladder. Cause I was constantly asking, she's just a kid who's gotta be moving. Um, and I would hate to see the response be to close everything down. To accommodate the fact that people are having difficulty adjusting as opposed to figuring out how to maybe have a little bit of a transition. And help the people who are, you know, help them learn to flourish in the environment.
No, I, you know, when we say systems and structures, we don't mean whole school widespread. We mean for those people who.
Are abusing it.
Who need it, right? And, and, uh, and that's in conversation with teachers and parents and counselors. And, uh, and it's something that, you know, um, we, we absolutely need to do, right? And it's a, and it's not a new conversation. It's a conversation that we've had for, for a couple of years now. It's a conversation I had in that first summer of two thousand twenty. You know, like South Eagan works well for this type of kid, you know, the, so you can actually work well for this type of kid. And, and we gotta be a school that works for everybody, right? And so we have to have some systems in place. Um, and, uh, and, and so we'll have to continue to, to work with the staff and the students and as, as we do that, right? And, uh, that's kind of what I meant by that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things I had, um, I saw PSAT results are in for kids. And I don't know if that's something we can have some sort of view of where we have been going and where we're going. And how our students are.
Yeah, I think.
Presented in a proper way.
Yeah, I think how we present metrics and how we answer the question of like, how do we know we're producing? You know, high quality.
More than just.
The results of students is more than that. And I think definitely more to come on that topic. So, but the answer is yes. And there's gonna be more conversation about what that looks like.
Yes.
And, uh, you'll see some conversation with, uh, the, the, the three people at this room and, and the building principals. As we get into June and July and August.
That's kind of like one of the few eyes we kind of see. So, yeah, I like to have that framed correctly.
Yep.
So I think it's good for us to keep our, our eye on a little bit. Couple of things, there's, you know, so much going on this year with, right now AP exams are finished, I believe, right now. Um, there were, uh, NHIA award recipients in the National Telegraph All Stars and Jazz Band. And, and, and so I just want to say thank you and congratulations to everybody, because it's hard to remember it all, but, um, there is a lot going on. So thank you. Uh, I noticed the one last thing I have in there is FAFSA, which is, you mentioned in there about being a requirement for next year. Um, my one piece is, I, I know we have to, every kid has to do this now. It's by law. Um, I just want to make sure that we aren't, we as a school are not thinking of having any access whatsoever to any of the data in it. And it's a, somehow we say, yes, it's been done. Check the box. Cause I don't think it is art.
That's how it works.
Good. Okay. I'm like, I don't want us, let anyone having any access in the school to anybody's thing.
Yeah, and, and just the, the principal has to sign off that it's been done.
Perfect.
So I know you are right on.
Thank you. I just want to make sure. Everyone, people who aren't going to college.
Yes.
Everyone has to do it.
It's a requirement, um, but, uh.
What happens if they don't?
So the, the, it's, uh, principal may, if it makes a, a good faith effort to do everything we can to have them do it, the principal can sign off and excuse it.
Okay, good. Because all I can say is that the FAFSA is a giant pain. And if I had a child who wasn't going to college, there is no way I would want to spend the time filling it out. I mean, why would anyone do that?
Legislation.
Legislation requirement. All right. But there is a little opt-out way. We just have to.
Requirement.
We just have to make sure it's in everyone knows how.
State.
So.
State.
Yeah.
Dan, can you do something about that?
That's what we're saying. We gotta, we, we.
Yes. Right, right, it is.
That's why I didn't know what was required this. Like, no, that's not like, what are we doing?
And if we've, if we've sent communication three times, Mike can say that we've done everything we can.
Okay.
It is, there's no intent to withhold a graduation.
Okay. Thank you.
State would say that too, that we've had advisement from the state.
Thank you.
That we do the best we can and we've made a good effort for multiple times and we can say that we've done everything.
Thank you. That's why I wanted to clarify. Yeah, I want to clarify what that.
I'm glad you did.
Okay. All right, another question?
Yeah, yeah. This isn't a forum for this, but that's some serious BS from our state. Dan, what the hell's going on? Might not be constitutional. Anyway. What, the AP exams are complete. Could, could you, uh, maybe in the next one, um, give us a perspective on how many exams were taken? Relative to history. I think this is a, an important topic. It's not a new topic. Um, it feeds into our US News World Report ranking quite heavily. Thirty percent of that score is, is related to this. Uh, not that that's the most important thing in the world, but, um, we've had this ongoing discussion about AP dual enrollment. What are we doing? What are we gonna continue to invest in and how are we gonna continue to invest in it? I know last year we heard from students, high achieving students went to top tier colleges, elect athletes, you know, awesome. And they're like, why would I take? It's not, it's under no incentive for the, the, some of those students to take it. Well, if, if we wanted people to take it. Be nice to know where we stand. Is it increased, decreased? Are we stable? Is, what are we gonna do with that data? Um, and, and are we gonna make that a goal? Or are we not gonna make that a goal? When we talk about goals, I think that should be part of our discussion. So it'd be nice to have that data to support that.
Correct. And along with how many people were in the class.
Yes.
Yes, retro.
Took it, what were the total?
Yes.
Were eligible to take it and.
Right.
Yes.
Right. And I remember, um, as well, when that student presented, um, there were a lot of, there's some of the reasons why they didn't take it was. Wasn't enough instructional time to cover all the course materials. So in order to do that, it was gonna be self-education. And that's a person's already taking a lot of other AP classes and dual enrollment, busy person and, and they already knew where they were gonna go. So there wasn't any upside. The college they were gonna go wasn't gonna give me credit for it anyway. So they were gonna get credit for their dual enrollment. And that was a sweet spot for them and that, for that student that worked. And I completely understand where that. That's real, right? So, um, let's get some visibility on that so we can, uh, discuss it later.
Okay.
Thank you.
One thing on the, one last thing.
I'm sorry, I want to move on.
All right. Well, you're looking at all of our successes. And I say this only because we're at the end of the year. So we also have the time where everybody knows what they're getting for merit aid. And you may not understand, be able to say, this is what this student got for merit aid. But I mean, we published this list of all the schools that the kids get into. I think it's also useful to, to the extent possible, tout what. Was available for merit aid, you know, merit, you know, X dollars were given in merit aid to seventy-six kids total. I mean, it's a something, because I know when, when we're picking schools. Um, I know that was, I mean, that was, uh, it was a difference for our, us at the end of just a massive difference. Between my daughter's top two schools for my, for my older one. Um, and I think sometimes when we're looking at the achievements that people have made, um, and what colleges are people getting into? The discussion of what's, what's affordable, how's it gonna be paid? And how is the school recognizing what I've done and giving me that merit aid is a big. A big factor. Thank you. Okay, um, just getting back to agenda, okay, um. We'll move on to, uh, facilities update. Anyone have any questions on the report that's in there? Thank you to Roger and his crew for all the extra work they do to keep our facilities up to date. And I appreciate them taking the time, putting the entire report in here so we know what is happening. Um, consent agenda approval. There's two sets of draft minutes. Are there any, um, any changes that need to be made to the draft minutes? For the thirteenth or the eighteenth of April? Nope. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please? And a second, and Glazerman second, uh, since Christie is online, we need to have a roll call.
Well, Keith, yes.
Dave, yes.
Run, yes.
Glazerman, yes.
Glover, yes.
Peters, yes.
Oh, sorry. Peters, yes. Thank you very much. Um, update from community council. I just want to say this will be Ralph's last meeting with us. He will be graduating. And Ralph, thank you very much for all your hard work this year. We appreciate it. We appreciate your, your time to attend all of our meetings and other. Other events that we've had and, um, taking the time to, to truly participate. So, good luck next year.
It's, it's really been a privilege. Um, I, I ran for the same position, I, my junior year. And unfortunately didn't get it, but this is something that I've wanted to do for a long time. It's something I've been passionate about. It's something I've advocated for at a state level. Um, so I'm really glad that I got to do this this year, really. Thank you guys so much. Um, community council, uh, this week we nominated our, uh, new executive officers. Uh, they will be voted on next Monday at the night meeting. Um, they'll be giving speeches and then we get to deliberate and, and vote on them. Uh, we've elected our new moderator for next year. His name's Colin Atkinson. Uh, very sweet kid. I think he's a rising senior. Don't get mad at me, Colin, if that's wrong. Uh, we passed our council records proposal, which says that the clerk is in charge of making sure that all the records are actually put into. Some form of formal folder that gets kept perpetually. Uh, and we also put a little bookshelf in the dean of students office with a plaque that says community council, so that it doesn't get lost as easily, hopefully this time.
Yes. I just want to interrupt and say this was Ralph's senior project. And that was his applied piece to get everything put together in one place, which has been missing for decades.
Uh, yeah, some of it has been missing for decades, definitely. Um, a large portion of it was found in the school's vault. I'd searched it several times, but somebody else, uh, searched it again and found it in an unmarked box. Apparently it was moved after, uh, our old dean of students, Kelly Driscoll, left the district. So that's something that we need to be more diligent about in the future. And hopefully having that in community council's bylaws will make council, you know, aware of that. So.
Right. You also do, wasn't that part of your thing too, changing them to an electronic format also?
So I digitized a good handful of the documents. I couldn't get through forty pounds of paper, unfortunately. Uh, but I did get some of the stuff from the nineties and some from the two thousands, things like the schoolhouse proposal that we had in, in two thousands. Um, and some of the, uh, council rosters from nineteen ninety-three. I found those very interesting. Uh, so yeah, those have been digitized and those will be available on the community council website as soon as I remind Tony that he needs to bug somebody else to post that on the website. But, um, most of the documents are going to be kept in binders in Sarah's office downstairs.
At least it's in one place.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Yes, they are winding up their year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. So, uh, sticking with the community council theme, we have, uh, two. Members of community council we, we need to appoint this evening. There were the letters that were sent out. They're also on Trello. Um, there were five of them. I question for everybody here is we can either just discuss these in public. We can go into non-public, do a quick discussion, come back out where people's comfort level. I mean, if we're discussing people, I tend to like to do that in non-public. If everyone liked to take a few minutes to go into non-public?
Yes.
Okay. We move this to be. Okay, we move this to the end, so.
I think.
The other business and then.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Steve. Thank you for for offering that up. I appreciate that.
If there's one thing in public that I would like to request specifically about community council.
Yes.
Is there a way that our IT director can get SAU email addresses for our members? Because they don't have them now.
For the community members.
For the community members, exactly. That was something that was mentioned to me and we can somehow set that up. You have for budget committee, we should be doing also for these guys as well.
Yeah, that's been an issue with sharing documents and that, especially when it's students doing it. They don't know sometimes that they don't have access yet.
Yeah, we will absolutely thank you for that catch.
I'm okay, so remember to come back to that. Dean of faculty discussion replacement. There was a memo in here. The one handed store it was in your.
Yeah, it's in the pack.
Yeah, in the pack. I'm like those in your things. Careful. So we got to discuss.
Yeah, I'll start it and turn it over to Mike. With the wonderful. You know, for Dana becoming the principal, that opens up the dean of faculty position. Mike and I talked about this throughout the process. Because of the timing and the current hiring status, the recommendation is that we move to interim dean of faculty position. For twenty-three, twenty-four. The process for selecting an interim dean of students is articulated in. On the memo, which is GCEB, which we're doing for someone that's not a principal, so that's growth. That we actually did this for an administrator. And and Dana also articulated the process and the timeline for a permanent. A dean of faculty. So tonight, any questions about the process? But we are looking for support so we can post tomorrow, because this was a change of position. The posting will begin tomorrow for an an internal candidate interim internal will be our first and we do expect some applications internally.
So questions.
Okay, so I I ran into this struggle actually up in my heart. And I was absolutely adamant about getting an interim principal up there. When we lost our principal, there's three months to go and I was very skeptical of getting a qualified candidate to live here. I was wrong. We got an outstanding qualified candidate by going through the process. So I'm wondering, are we hurting ourselves by not doing that? And then just jumping to the interim to give us more time? Or are we saying, hey, we don't want to spend the time because of other commitments? That this is something that's better served by using the next nine months to do it? Or this is potentially testing somebody in house? So we have the opportunity to see how they act in that role than potentially. So I pose that as a question, not as a directive. I just kind of want to understand why we're jumping to the interim spot when I've seen it successfully operate the other way.
I do think even even in the last two years, the hiring has changed. It's for the last two years, the pool of people entering administration is different and a short pool to evaluate and get people where they are now. The vast majority of people who wanted to move have moved. So we are at the tail end and so opening as a full fledged search. But that is yes, and yes, I I do think that an interim. Opportunity provides a just someone internally to see if it is a lifestyle and position that they. You know, would want and see how they're and we can and we can get a full picture of their role. So I think it's both. I think. I I don't think the pool is 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 deep enough right now in this area to have a a search that would be conducted over the next six weeks. We are talking hiring someone in June. And Mike and Dana and the team have done so much quality work. That this is the best way to keep this work and momentum going without interruption. That's that's my belief.
And the latter is is really important. We have. It's two thousand twenty, working incredibly hard, the directors, superintendent, extension of the school board. Partnership with staff. To improve some of the experiences for for students and staff. And, you know, onboarding, you know, into Sohigan as an external candidate or an interim or a full time person. It's difficult. It's difficult, you know, and and it's it's time constraints. And, you know, this allows us to, you know, if we get the, you know. Right person internally. Great. And if we have, we don't, we get, you know, we go external, we find the right match at the right time and that, you know. Might be able to do that. And but the thing is to keep. The work going and not have to make changes and make changes to the directions of the building where you're not able to implement what you're doing. That really slows down the progress and 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 the focus on kids. You're focusing on adults. We don't want to focus on adults, you know. You want to focus on the kids' experience here and I think this allows it, but you do see us having a permanent process. You know, there, that's really important regardless. So let's say it's an internal candidate and and there's going to be a process. If it's an internal interim, there will be a process. Next year regardless. We are intending on that and that's important to us. We think this gives that God. Educational experience.
Okay. Man, I I trust your judgment. It's the benefit of having our internal now principal to come in and. Hire the staff that's going to best support her vision in the building is, I feel, is absolutely adamantly. That's the most.
Yep.
Thing here. And if we feel we need more time, that's great. I I just wanted to understand sort of the rationale.
Fair, and and Dana is full in favor of this.
I I had a similar but slightly different question. I have a particular person in mind and I'm not going to say their name. We have to go into it in nonpublic. I will, but let me just say. We had a number of candidates for our principal who didn't have principal experience. And you saw all those people, talked to all those people and through the lens of principal maybe weren't ready or up to the task. But that wasn't everybody, because we know that some people's names were brought forward for larger consideration, so. Guess the question is. Either the of the ones we saw who didn't get hired or the ones that didn't make it through that or, you know, sort of behind the curtain process. Or there are external candidates in that pool who. Yes, maybe knew the Sohigan, but you've met. It's like, wow, was impressed with the top quality. You said part of the problem is we're not getting the pool. Well, we just got some pool. Was it fourteen or some some number of applicants for principalship? Was there was there a body of candidates in that pool? That may be the right fit for this position? And worth considering. Not with availability.
And I mean, that also creates potentially. I mean, that creates problems, right? Because you'd want those people to reapply. I mean, we know those are people who are applying for a principal position. And. Right, you don't know that they'd want a different position. I think there's always going to be the question then of are they working for the person who they just got beat out for this position and. For the principal position. And if right now they're applying for principal positions, how long are they going to stay in the duty students position? So I mean, I guess if those people apply, you should consider them, obviously, just like you would any other. Any other candidate, but I think it would be a mistake to reach out to people who applied for a different position in the past. Much like when we were hiring the principal, we didn't hire, reach out to everybody who applied for the superintendent spot. And say, hey, by the way, are you interested in this? And if they're interested, they'll apply.
Yeah, I mean. It's hard to find good people, so if you found one and you thought, hmm. If someone picks up the phone and gives them a call and are you interested? Maybe the answer is yes, the answer is no, I don't know, but. I wouldn't. Wouldn't turn away the opportunity to reach out to someone who you were impressed with to bring them into our system. That's all I'm saying. And I don't know what what your process is on that. Looking at Steve or Mike. So just wanted to share the thought.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion for that? Yes, and the policy required. Oh, no, it was just to inform.
It's just to inform.
To inform and get feedback, so I don't think.
All right, so we're good. Any other questions?
Thank you. Feedback was great.
All right.
I'm sorry, one more question. So the person internal, right? So that personally, we're going to, at some point, we're going to have, we're filling holes with. Holes with people, so there's going to be somewhere down the line where.
We think.
Open slot that someone new was going to have to come into backfill something, I suppose. Perhaps.
Wait, it's not necessarily internal though, right?
We're going to start.
Okay. I know you said there were internal people who are interested.
We're going to start, we'll post internal and that's common, you post internal five, ten days and then to see what the what the pool is there. But. You know, we will see depending on what happens if there is a way to manage this completely internally or if we have to.
But that's also internal, Amherst, Malvern and and so.
Correct, so SAU Y.
SAU Y.
Correct.
All right. Okay, thank you, everybody. The SHS utilization discussion, so. Mike, I want to say thank you to you and I know Galen worked hard a lot on the report that was provided.
Yeah.
Is there anything you want to say?
Talking sixty that.
Yeah.
Seventy hours worth of work.
Yeah.
You know, between myself and Galen. This report. And I give Galen all the credit in the world, you know, to take some. And take some information that we were looking for, that this board was looking for, that Steve Chairman requested, that I requested, I was able to come up with. But I think it's a really comprehensive, really clean, really clear. You know, a set of data points for the to have a conversation around. So, you know, Galen is incredibly valuable and I think. This is probably a good of work. You know, as you produce a situation like this.
Okay, thank you. So just to to start the discussion. You know, this is, I I want to have this discussion before we head into the fifteenth because I kind of want to engage about Sohigan because this is talking about using. Our school, our rooms. And our academic experience here. And I, we need to have a have a little chat about what we saw. In this report. So. Just, I I'm just going to start off real quickly and then I'll let everyone else, you know, chime in. We'll we'll go around maybe and say what your, where your thoughts are, where you stand. So I took. I took the analysis that was done by by the administration. I looked. Dan did some work based on some of his look. And then I, and he basically said he he added some rooms in that might have been left out by administration, saying they could, they should be potentially used as classrooms. I looked at it and I said, well, maybe some of them, maybe not all of them. If I took all of the classes being offered today by period. And I said, put them all into the main building. The rooms available in the main building is in for period one is thirty-three rooms. Classrooms in use is forty-two, so we don't even have enough rooms. When you look at the second period, you're you're short six rooms, then nine rooms, six rooms, seven rooms, two rooms. So you would be at a very full capacity using our building the way we are using it today. So it would have to be a whole nother look at how you deliver education. And what rooms are being used and do you want to be at such a full capacity? That's my just first high level thoughts. But I would like to hear if anyone else's feedback and thoughts too. Because we're going to have to come up with. When we come to the on the fifteenth, I know. Christie and Shannon have put out an agenda how they want to. Present. The room usage information, but I want to make sure we at Sohigan have had a discussion to say. Where are we? Where are we as a board? So I'll start. One, quick question. When you say, this is probably something I should know, but I don't. When it's, we say impact fees could be utilized to fund that study. What does that mean?
So Amherst has collected impact and appropriate use for impact fees is for architectural engineering regarding changes to your footprint of your building.
So there's like a fund somewhere for that that could be utilized.
Correct.
Okay, okay, perfect. That was my first thought.
Order there. The challenge with that would be legality of it's raised by the Amherst tax base, not by the Malvern and tax.
Correct.
And so using that to study a cooperative district is probably going to have serious challenges. If they're going to use it to study an Amherst middle school or an Amherst elementary school, I'm assuming that there are no issues there. But to go ahead and say that now Amherst tax dollars are going to be used to study a potential Malvern and project, I'm assuming there's going to be some significant problems there.
So it was.
Just high level.
Okay, so I I do have a PowerPoint that can be shared at some point. So that is true. The. The likely. Percentage application would be the tax impact split. So when when we figure out the tax impact and the tax effort, it's eighty-five percent for Sohigan, it's eighty-five percent. Amherst fifteen percent, Malvern. So there. In the. Know what they call it. The zoning ordinance. The impact fee ordinance. There is language that specifies that that. Any funds that are expended would need to apply. That percentage. So say there was an architectural engineering study that was a hundred thousand dollars. We, you would have, the Sohigan Cooperative School District would have access to up to eighty-five thousand dollars to pay for that study. The other fifteen thousand would need to be paid for by school district, either. Capital reserve or or the budget.
So not an effort to pivot off this because it's very important, right? So we take a look at that using that hundred thousand dollar examples to come up with that extra fifteen thousand.
Yep.
Amherst would be paying twice. Based on the 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 formula to say, hey, Malvern is still only responsible now for fifteen percent.
Right.
Of the fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, because.
Even though.
Amherst. The town of Amherst is not going to pay for architectural engineering fees or or any anything that. Is right, that is. Is where the the proportion of the cost. Would as applied to Malvern.
All right, so thank you for clearing that. I I guess my first high level thought was, okay, so we don't have a room for seventh and eighth grade the way it's currently configured. I guess there's always the question of when we talk about additions to different buildings, and this is again a bigger SAU discussion. Like where, like, is there a smaller addition that would allow that and use some of the space? So that's one thing. But my big, my first impression was clearly there's not room for an entire seventh and eighth grade to get integrated in here. I was interested by the thought because one of the things that I think, I mean, one of the things I think we looked at this for. Is we know there's a shortage of space. And if there's a way that we in in the other districts and that we've got some space here. So I thought it was interesting, you know, we've talked about like if there's preschool, you know, we looked at Bo that's got the preschool with the high school and actually use that for part of their training. It was really kind of cool. I thought that was an interesting idea. I've thought about, is there an option at some point cost wise? To move SAU offices here and either phase out or do something different with the brick school. And again, this is like throwing spaghetti at a wall. Not saying any of these are good ideas, but I think I think part of what, part of what needs to get done overall is just a looking at. You know, we've got this many kids and this much space throughout all the districts. What could be done? To help these issues and help the budgets and help help. Help make space because if we could pull some kids here. You know, I don't, I don't know how many preschoolers we currently have, but if the preschoolers, for example, got pulled here, that opens up space at Clark Wilkins. And so I don't, I don't know about the feasibility of those things, but I think going into the meeting next week, those are the sort of things that we could at least talk about. Like, look, we do know we've got. And I really appreciate the work that was done on this. We do know that we've got. Some room. We don't have enough room to do. X, but we may have enough room to help with, you know, A, B, or C, depending what. You know, what Amherst wants to do. So so those are my thoughts. Yeah, one thing I want to add on to that to always keep in mind is. Even if we say, so there's something here to do, put somebody in the annex. Whether we'd have to build an addition on to Sohigan itself, there's a cost. It's still, nothing's been done with the middle school and Clark that have significant. HBAC. Internal issues and roof issues, so they would still have costs there. So it's the overall look. In many ways, it's not just what works here.
Absolutely.
I just want to keep, everyone keep that in the back of your mind that we, that Amherst still has to work on their schools. I guess it's the 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 schools.
The impact of.
The impact of the individual schools. Definitely, I mean, that's that's something we can talk about at length, but obviously the schools. In the Amherst district really need help.
Start no role.
Found fundamental help. I think the question is the size of the.
additional space. And if that's not passing,
Yeah.
what are the options? Because we can, you know, it, it, people can say till the cows come home that we need, we need X school, but if it doesn't pass, I think that's part of what we need to discuss. Like, so great, what do we do in the meantime? Well, it's not passing, where we've got kids with no space. And, and I mean, how do we fix this kind of, this, this need? And we've got some space. But some space. That was my takeaway. And I'll shut up then.
Oh, that's fine. Thanks for that.
To me, I mean, this discussion needs to start with this board. What do we want to do with this space that we have available? There are a lot of options, whether it's taking, trying to take the maker space from AMS and relieve whatever space is available in there for them to use.
It's another good option.
And, and use it here. Or if it's bringing the SAU office over here or putting a preschool, you know, and putting a playground out there, you know, these are, these are options that we need to decide. Or if it's just expanding the curriculum offerings for the high school exclusively, these are things that we need to decide for ourselves. The reason why seventh, eighth grade, seventh and eighth grade is kind of the popular idea is because from a governance standpoint, it kind of makes sense with Mont Vernon. Leaves them of their tuition responsibilities and gives them ownership in, in their structures. Whether, we can do it as, as a junior high format or a middle school format that's dependent on what the curriculum is that's decided by, by the, the administration. But I don't think there's any scenario where we can't, we can do this without putting a shovel in the ground.
Somewhere, somewhere.
Somewhere. Whether we need, we know we need to do something about the, the science rooms in the annex, whether it's applying the money that we knew we were going to have to invest in that towards an exterior, external expansion of science labs somewhere outside the, the current footprint, expanding the footprint of the school. Or if it's putting an addition on the annex to make it a full-fledged school, independent school of its own, whether it's adding a, a gym and a cafeteria and office space for a separate administration and making it its own, its own independent entity. There are a lot of questions that I don't think we can answer in one meeting tonight or, you know, even, even if the other two boards don't want to go along with this in any way, shape, or form, we still have to discuss what we do with the space. I think, you know, we, there are a lot of bad ways to, to use it. You know, you can, like I, like you asked, filling a you know, a container will, will expand to fill the entire container. Is that a, an effective application of rest of community resources? Are we being good fiduciary? Fiduciaries in, in guarding and securing the, the resources of our community that way? I, I can't justify that in my own mind. So there's something we need to do to utilize this space in a you know, conscientious manner that makes sense for the community. So seventh and eighth grade makes, makes sense, but it may not be what the community wants. It's something that we can, we should examine and, and rule in, rule out. I do have a little bit of an issue with the way the, the meeting on the fifteenth is formatted. I don't see this as an SAU board thing because that, the SAU is, to me, is the brick school and the people that work within it and how it's managed. This is a meeting of three independent school boards. So in my mind, Christie should be participating as a member of the Sohegan Cooperative School Board and not moderating the, and presiding over the meeting. So I think it should be a third party, either an administrator or somebody designated who can barely run a meeting. Because it's really just kind of directing traffic and keeping the discussion on track and dictionary. Everybody has a fair chance to speak, so.
It was posted as an SAU meeting.
I know, but I don't think technically it's, it falls under that.
I don't, I don't have an issue. Well, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying in that regard. I think it's,
Because we're not.
It's a little bit, let me tell you my issues real quick, then you respond. It's a little bit semantics though, because I think we meet with the SAU and often discuss things that involve all three of the boards. So they're a little bit beyond the scope of just managing the SAU. The one thing that I thought was interesting is the, is the memo at the end on vote on final resolution. Because one, I think that's awfully optimistic, but two, I'm not sure we, we can vote on it. Like if, if the end discussion from this is that Amherst says, we want to move ahead with, I don't know, a different addition, or we're going to do A, B, or C with our space, I don't, I don't feel like I would abstain from that vote. Not because I think it's the wrong decision. I don't have any decision on, I don't have an opinion right now on what that decision is. We haven't had the discussion. But I'm saying now I would abstain no matter what, because I don't think that's, it's not my place as a member of this board to vote on necessarily what Amherst should be doing with its space or what Mont Vernon should be doing with its space. I think we can give our opinions. We can say, look, we're looking forward to this. We could make like joint resolutions that we're going to explore further the option to do A, B, or C and reconvene. And I think that sort of stuff could be, could be voted on or looked at, but I don't, I just don't see us voting on a resolution. That's just my personal opinion. We have the authority to.
Where it falls apart for me is that it can't be, it can't be an SAU vote. We can't use weighted voting. It can't be majority rules because we can have a twelve to five vote and the entire delegation of Mont Vernon votes against it. It's dead.
Right.
You know, and this should be a discussion that goes back to the individual board meetings where their community and our, our communities and our constituents have a chance to participate in the, in the process and, and give discussion and get feedback.
Yep. Okay, before we go on, or I'm sorry, if you want to say something, Christie wants to speak.
And there was some discussion about actually having like a board going back to codify the discussion, so.
Chris, yeah, Christie, you want to speak?
Yeah, I mean, first to address the idea that we would need an outside party to moderate a discussion. I'm happy to, I'm happy to be an out, to take myself out of the Sohegan waiting, but like I, like I talked to you when you texted earlier today that Steve had put some information about what maybe we might consider looking at, obviously, we're not going to vote on anything that anyone's uncomfortable with in, in a meeting, but we're talking more about how we go forward than how we end. So we're not saying we're going to vote and never have any conversations again, but we're going to, as a group, decide if we're going to keep having this conversation or continue to, to exhaust time and resources. My one problem with the, with the protest at this point is that we all sat here together and we voted to have this meeting. So that would have been the time to say we shouldn't have this meeting, but we voted to have a meeting, we scheduled a meeting, we announced the meeting, so it's.
I don't think that's, we, we voted to meet together as boards. This is not.
We voted to have an SAU meeting.
I, but this can't be just in, in and of its nature. It can't be an SAU.
You can absolutely have an SAU meeting where we have this conversation. And I wish.
It's nothing, it's not, it's not about you. This is not an SAU issue. It's an issue that is between the three independent boards. The SAU is not, I hate to, you know, sound like, you know, pedantic here, but the SAU is not a, is not a school board.
So it's really difficult. When I'm on the phone, so I'm going to have a problem with that, Dan. I can't, like, I'm not in the room. So if I can just finish the couple of things I had to say, and then you're welcome to respond. That would be super helpful for me. This board, and here, here's part of the problem I'm having with the conversation. We're a Sohegan Cooperative School District Board, and right now we are in charge of four grades and two towns, the students from those two towns in those four grades. We have resources that years of budgets have passed for us to do that job of educating those people. And I'm concerned about the conversation we're having, honestly, where we're saying, hey, maybe we should rework the co-op. We should do all these things that, that the community hasn't asked us to do that have been looked at in the past. Instead of, I liked your, I liked how you started. I liked what you were saying about, are there things that we could be doing in a more efficient way or a better way for Sohegan community? But I think it's a conversation that we need to have at Sohegan first of these are the resources for Sohegan. And where, where should we best be using them? Are we doing a great job right now? For not doing a great job, then, then we could look at how we're using the resources that we have, but unless we determine as a Sohegan board that wow, we just have so much space to offer. And we determine that we're going to somehow let go of that space or we don't even know, to be honest. And so now I would like to let Steve, if you don't mind, to comment a little bit on what Sohegan might do going forward.
Yeah. My, my, my feeling is that this has to be a decision, whether the other two boards want to participate in this, has to be their decision. And how we pursue the space availability that we have, how we analyze it is going to be dependent on whether or not they want us, they want to take us up on the offer. If they say no, then it's, it's between them and the voters next year. Right? And we go, we go ahead and we, we do go about our business and we look into options that apply only to us because we can't force those two boards to do anything. They're independent and what we vote on, no matter how we vote on the fifteenth as an SAU board, it's, it's their decision ultimately. And I think it has to be something that they do at their board, their regular board meetings.
And, and so before Steve speaks, I just want to, I think I just want to clarify that I think Monday's meeting, it would be moderated by Christie. The board is, like Christie said, I think what I've read and understand and this Christie clarified, it's just, do we want to keep going forward in this path or do we go different path or, you know, or everyone just goes back to their own districts and leave each other alone? But whatever happens, each board has to vote on their own process. So I don't think the SAU board is going to vote, especially in a way to vote or anything else, is going back to each board separately. So does that make it feel better? It's just being moderated by Christie of the discussion. It's not a vote by an SAU board.
I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter to me who moderates it, who, who presides over it. It's just.
It has to go to each board.
It should be, it should be a, an independent, it shouldn't be an SAU board thing in my mind. And that's might be more symbolic than practical.
And I think not, not writing in the board notes and prepping this, that would so back, go back to ratify the vote. That's, that's on me and I, I apologize because yes, that, it was discussed with Christie that, you know, we understand the role of each board plays on, on impact on that board. And, and Dan, to your point, and whatever the Sohegan Cooperative School Board's priorities are for Mike, and then I serve at the pleasure of Mike on, on July one, if it is an interest to take a look at how we can better utilize the space in this footprint, if that is a priority, I just want to be always mindful of what our priorities are because as the more you get, it's thinner. But you know, in, in my beginning tenure last year, one of the things that I was focusing on was trying to take a look at Sohegan Kids and CTE. You know, I visited when I was assistant superintendent for a cup of coffee. I visited all the CTE. We arranged transportation for CTE. We were arranging tours. We were ramping up and, and to me, if we have extra space, creating a CTE program, you know, using student voice and, and what would they like here to take the barrier of transportation? I would love an in-house, in, in, in this building, a CTE program. I'm not talking about footprint using some of the space. Also, the preschool program is a T, early childhood is a CTE program. There's a two programs that we could, and still, if that is a priority and I'm in, you know, I had a chance in, in this cup of coffee to work with the town of Amherst on, on reopening the maker space. But could Amherst Middle School use that space and send that over here?
Yes.
If, and, and I'm happy to, under Mike's direction, to support the utilization of this space to better meet the needs of these kids in this community here, all in. And, and I apologize, Christie, I owe you an apology, apology for not connecting that the individual board piece in this, because I think that's because of the revenue and that was my fault.
Right.
But
That's what discussions are about.
How to use this building to, to provide a better opportunities and better student experience and also community connections. I'm all in and love to do that.
So this goes to my one thing, and I know I, I spoke to Steve this week. It goes back to Sohegan was founded thirty years ago with a mission and a vision as a community and a democratic process. This is thirty years later. We've not ever really revisited who we are, who we want to be. Mike's mentioned, community's here, you know, staff people are here. We need to figure out how to get here. I think we need to focus on that. I think we need to figure out who are we? Do we want to deliver CTE? Do we want to deliver CTE? Do we want to? Who are we before we can even answer this question? And I would like to spend some time on that versus spending on whether seventh and eighth grade can come in unless it makes sense in our vision and in our process. We got to answer that question first. And that's the vision to sit with the principal and superintendent and staff and community. Those are my thoughts. You've been quiet. Okay, alright. I just, I'll be fast. I, I mean, Christie, the one thing I wanted to respond to is, I mean, you're right. Our obligation is to the, it's a weird position almost because our obligation is to Sohegan and Sohegan Cooperative School District. But we're part of a bigger kind of whole and to some extent, the, what impacts us impacts other people as well and other districts. And so it's, it's, it's difficult, right? I mean, there's a limited pot of taxpayer money out there that anyone's going to be able to get. And it's going to be available and that we're going to be able to use or budgets are just going to not, not pass and, you know, proposals are going to get voted down and that sort of thing. And, and that's not good for us either. So I, I agree with you that our, our first priority needs to be looking at our school. I do think, again, we need to recognize that there's a bigger issue going on townwide and if there are ways we can help with that, even if it's not the ideal solution, but if there's ways we can help, even if it's just temporarily, relieve some of that overcrowding or do something to assist with some of that, I do think that still should be explored because we are part of a bigger community. You know, I don't, it shouldn't just be like, I think your, your analogy is a good one, Dan. Great. Well, we're going to fulfill everything we've got. And, but I also agree that it ought to be a, a thoughtful conscientious way. And maybe that is bringing CTE here. And maybe that is cost-effective if you take out the transportation, the cost of sending them other places. Like maybe that can balance out. Maybe bringing maker space over is a big help. That was an interesting thought that I hadn't thought about because that opens up some space at, at the middle school. Maybe the lower schools look at, I don't know, some other configuration. Maybe there's a way to move more people to the middle school for them once that space opens up.
And that's their decision.
But that's on them. Well, but it is on them, but it impacts, what we do impacts them too. Because if we open up that space by bringing maker space, just as an example, that's something that we can, you know, we can potentially offer or say that we're open to exploring or open to considering to help with their problem as well. You know, because we are part of a bigger whole, even though we are on board. Sunny?
So why don't we have a meeting about what you're saying and discuss who we are and, and what we want? I don't, sorry.
No, no, that's.
Board retreat.
That's a, that's a thing because it's, it's, it would be, to me, I envision a process that includes community, staff, administration, school board, alumni to make sure we hear, you know, where, where are we today? You know, like where are we today? Where do we want to be? That's the important, important part. And then we, then we as a board administration work together and figure out how to get there. But we need that vision.
So.
But it doesn't need to be a huge drawn-out process.
It's, it's really tough because Anna, going back to what you said about the town of Amherst having a problem and is there a problem that this building could actually solve for the town of Amherst? As being a minority player in this institution, this does not really benefit the town of Mont Vernon really that much because the problem in this town is its elementary school system. You've got buildings that are in disrepair that have literally had fires that put student safety and educational in jeopardy. The town of Mont Vernon has spent over a decade ramping its building. It was not the best building in this district. It really wasn't. It was probably the worst at the time. But we've spent over a decade bettering that building, creating the infrastructure, creating the proper things up there. And so that building is really good. It shouldn't be on the backs of the Mont Vernon taxpayer to fix the town of Amherst problem. It should not be. And when we talk about bringing the seventh and eighth grade students over, my community went to the ballot this year and it passed. And it said, you know what? We want to explore what the options are. For us to interfere with that as a Mont Vernon representative, I cannot go along with at all. We have to allow that process to play out, allow our Mont Vernon School Board, our community to engage in a conversation to say, what do we want for our seventh and eighth grade students? Right? So we're only two votes on this board. But what we're talking about now is huge to our community. We are responsible for fifteen percent of any construction to that building over there to now create space for a building that is in significant disrepair. It's not fair to Mont Vernon. And so when I take a look at the path forward, I cannot agree with you more because it's literally like you're pulling all the words out that I've shared with members of my community over the last year and a half about this very issue. Is this building, this, this structure, this cooperative should be learning. Is this building, this, this structure, this cooperative should be learning and figuring out how to better the experience. We hear all the time as board members, and I'm sure you can share that Sao Hegan isn't for my kid or Sao Hegan's different or, you know, Sao Hegan's fitting a particular mold for a particular student that my kid doesn't fall in. We should be focusing on that. We should be focusing on the CTE program instead of sending a kid down to Nashua or Milford. Maybe there's a program or culinary arts instruction program that we can bring in-house here. That could bring other schools to us to share what we do here on a daily basis. As a cooperative, that's where we should be focused on. We should not be solving the Amherst School System's problems. We really should not be. I understand you guys as Amherst residents want to. I truly get that. And you're in a position of authority that allows you to be at a different level of that conversation. But as a member of this board and us being minority members of the board, it's unfair. Just my feeling.
That's a very good point.
One of, one of the things that made me gravitate towards the seven, moving seventh and eighth grade here was I, I approached some um, select members of, you know, members of select board of, of Mount Vernon and school board members. And they directed me independently to the video of, of the, um, the committee that they had kind of informally looking at the options. And the things that they agreed to look into were asking the cooperative to let them lease space for their, just the Mount Vernon seventh and eighth graders. Another option was to ask the cooperative whether they would absorb the seventh and eighth graders. The, another option was to build a structure onto the existing village school. The other option was to tuition them to another, to Goffstown or to do Boston or to allow parents to send their kids wherever they wanted and they'd pay the tuition cost for them. So this is one of the options that they discussed looking at. And to say that this isn't helping them by, by examining that option is, you know, what else are we supposed to do? I mean, they could say, the, the Mount Vernon School District Board can say, hey, we don't, that's not an option anymore. We don't want to explore it, but I'd want to hear that from them. And that, that relieves a lot of pressure on us, I think, because then it's not something we have to, we have to look into it. I'm, I'm doing this because my, you know, it's more of a conscience thing than anything else. We have plenty of, we have space. We have, you know, some great options to do exactly what Stephen was saying to, to take care of our own, you know, but that kind of mentality, I don't, I don't like that. We, we wanted to work as one district at one point. Um, but to say that we're only going to take care of our own is what it sounds like. Um, that's just not what my conscience can deal with right now, as, as far as this perspective goes. We, if, if it's something they're willing to look into and they want us to explore, I'm willing to do that as, you know, one voice on the board.
In addition to the other ideas was renting and leasing space and, and an office plaza. So I, I'm extremely aware of the in-depth conversation that the committee did. I was actually a part of the creation of it and, um, was very part of the formative process that they actually took through, which was very engineer minded. Uh, in terms of the people that actually ran it with an engineering background to sort of foster and sort of figure out. We actually came up with a flow chart. And I hope you saw that flow chart because it all depends upon what this town, Amherst does with its elementary school system. That's really what it's dependent upon. And my tax base went to the polls this year to say, we want to explore this. To, to say that that didn't happen would be a huge miscarriage or mischaracterization of what the community is actually saying. Because they're saying, you know what? The Mount Vernon School System should be researching the seventh and eighth grade program. Is it to build upon this building? Where can we fit it? What do we have for infrastructure? And then out of that conversation, then those five individuals will then come to the other parties and say, this is what we did. This is what our formative research is. Because that report that you're referring to said, we start there. We start with a formative informational, well-done research report to say, this is what the true cost would be to our community to actually bring our seventh and eighth grade students back. That's where it starts. And from this board's body standpoint, and I'm just going to be repetitive, so I apologize, is to say, where do we envision our students? Where do we envision our nine, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade students from both Amherst and Mount Vernon? And how can we deliver the best educational experience for them today, tomorrow, and then the next day? That's, I think, where our ship, our, our focus should actually be now. And that's where our focus should be until one of the other two parties comes back into the fold and say, you know what? We've done our research. We feel, and I'm speaking from Auburn's perspective, that we feel that the seventh and eighth grade program is worth revisiting. Because based on what we did last time and what we spent fifteen thousand dollars do, and John, you were on the committee with me, we realized that there were significant problems and barriers that would have allowed that to happen in a seamless and easy way without spending a significant amount of money. And if we're going to spend a significant amount of money, we want to make sure it's done right and done with purpose and done with thought. Just my take.
Okay. Well, it's a lot of expansion from the, from the master schedule analysis. I'm okay with the discussion at an SAU board level because as a forum to having people in the room to have a conversation, it's actually pretty good. I agree that it's not the appropriate place to make decisions. I think that, uh, one of the things I agreed with Stephen O'Keefe was that whatever Amherst as a town tax base may or may not do with Maker Space and blah, 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 blah. That's not this question. I think the important thing for fifteenth is what is the question? What is the, um, what are we, uh, moving to do or not do? I think the salient question is, what can we do here to facilitate that? Is what would it take to put seventh and eighth grade into that, in, in, into the cooperative and into this campus? If that's the question, I can imagine, um, Mount Vernon, given what their community clearly did, would be interested in learning more about that. Um, I could imagine that Amherst School Board would be interested learning more about that because that offers them an opportunity, consider alternative solutions to their problem. We can't solve that for them. That's what they were elected to do. So that comes us back to an essential question about this utilization analysis. This, I appreciate the work. I can't, I mean, it took that yeoman's effort. Bravo. This is a foot, this is a snapshot of what the current utilization is. And I appreciate that. There are gaps, however. If you compare these rooms to floor plans, there are at least nineteen rooms that have question marks about what the hell they're being used for. I'm not saying they're being used appropriately. I just don't know. Now, it's been a month. I've been asking for this as a board member and sometimes I feel like I would get more traction if I was a member from the public submitting a right to know request. So nevertheless, um, one of the things I learned in trying to get information about our building, our buildings, was that as an individual board member going to administration making requests is enough. It requires a majority vote here to be able to extract the information that's required to do the proper analysis as to how we're, what our space is, how it's being utilized now, which we know. And, and have a conversation about what our vision is, about how we might best use it going forward. And what will enforce us to ask value questions. How many course offerings are there? Are they all a hundred percent valuable? Maybe the answer is yes. Maybe the answer is no. We can't begin to ask those questions and understand what the ramifications of the answers are if we don't have a baseline of facts upon which we can all agree. How, how big is each room of the building? What is each room currently utilized for? Fundamental fact-based question. There are rooms excluded from this analysis. Maybe there's good reason for that. Maybe there's not. Why? They're still being used. The gym is being used, for example, and it's excluded from the analysis. I don't mean this as a, as a, as a, as a punch in the face to the administration that please don't hear me, mishear me. What I'm saying is this is a foundational transformative process question that's being asked. Bringing seventh and eighth to the cooperative would be a huge lift. Why would we do that? Why would we go through the effort to, to learn about all this? To build, to paint the portrait of a graduate. Okay? That's the ultimate thing. Why? Why do we have a disconnect between eighth and ninth grade? This might help solve that. That's our responsibility, you know? Why would the space alleviation at the, um, at the Amherst School District help them paint a portrait of a graduate? Because maybe now people can spread out a little bit more. This is a problem that's been brewing for ten years and nothing has been done about it. Absolutely nothing. So would, might there be some costs to this? There probably will be some costs. I mean, I mean, maybe some costs on the students. Maybe there will be some financial costs, but we can't have the conversation unless we have, um, the basic line of, of facts. And right now we don't have that. This report is insufficient to start the conversation. On my analysis, based on, uh, uh, the, uh, data is that there are at least sixteen hundred square feet of question mark. Because there's one list that has square footage and that's just in the annex alone. Cause I don't know anything about the square foot in the main building. Sixteen hundred, I don't know, don't, I don't mean to argue. I'm not going to argue the data. We don't have, we don't have that time. My point is I found discrepancies and I would like to get answers to this. I'd found rooms that, that are on maps that look sizable. I don't know how they're used. I've been trying to find the answers to those questions. I've been unable to do so. If anyone in this room on the, it's a board member is, is interested in continuing this conversation, I urge you to please, let's come together and ask our administration to facilitate our, our basis of knowledge so that we can come and have a meaningful conversation about whether the viability of this question.
So I'm kind of assuming that what you gave us, Mike, was the classrooms and the use of the classrooms. So you're not including like utility closets. You're not including the gym. You're not including bathrooms.
Division two.
The hallways. I mean, we're looking at like, where could we be teaching classes? Am I, am I wrong in that analysis or was I right in that assumption?
We're classroom space.
Okay. Because to me, that was what I saw and that's what kind of matters. And if we don't, I mean, I, I feel very confident after my poll of one, that being me, saying that if we went to the taxpayers and said, hey, we don't have room right now, but what we want is to build a significant addition onto Sao Hegan so we can do, start this process of trying to move over seventh and eighth grade. Heads are going to explode. I mean, we, like Stephanie said, we've got a very, 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 very real problem in the elementary schools that has to get fixed. I agree that we're going to have to build something, somewhere and some format to fix that. I think it's fairly obvious from the available classroom size that that's not going to be putting a seventh and eighth grade here with what we've currently got. I mean, it's just, it's just not. And, and, and the only way we could do that right now would be to seriously limit and jeopardize the learning experience of the kids that we are responsible for. You know, I don't want to start talking about how do we take away a bunch of classes so that we can fix this problem for other people. I want our kids to have a great experience here at Sao Hegan and see what we can do, if there's anything we can do. And maybe it's just on the margins because there's not a ton of space. And I hear, I hear, you know, the point about Mount Vernon. So maybe it's looking at things like if we do a CTE that includes preschool, is there a tuition charge against, you know, that offsets that cost for the preschool so that that's not falling back on Mount Vernon? Or is there a different allocation for that? I, I don't know. I mean, you know, but those are things we have to look at. Um, but there's not room to put a seventh and eighth grade here without a significant build. And you know that I have been on board on, let's look at this. I think there's lots of good reasons. I would, you know, I think personally a seventh and eighth grade here and then having two elementary schools that were K through six would be a wonderful idea. But it's not going to work.
I, before, before I send it.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry.
It's one, one, one.
Everybody, wait.
I think I can tell, bring down though.
I'll give you a minute to express and then John, you get your follow-up. Okay?
I, I, thank you. I think this is a good place to start the discussion because this is looking at the buildings as they are currently configured. And that's a, that's a perfectly valid place to start. You know, it, it's an iterative process. I think I've said it a hundred times that we got to look at what it would take to make this work. And it starts here, the way it's, the way it's configured, the way the, the administration prefers it to be. And then the next step is asking, what would we have to do next to make more space? And that's, that might be, uh, breaking up the, the learning commons again, making it back into four classrooms. It might be, um, breaking up the, the art room, which is technically four small rooms or breaking up the computer lab, which is two small rooms, um, using, you know, the, the state requires that any space where students can be assigned during the day be included in educational space. That includes the gym and the library. Um, so do we include those in the calculations? Do we put facts back in? That was, that was excluded. And that's a room that's not being used at all as far as I know right now. Um, every four rooms in this building that we can, that we can free up is ten percent of the building. It does, I mean, you know, ten percent isn't going to get us to, to the point where we have enough classrooms. But just to get, put it in perspective, you know, if there are sixty-five rooms between the two buildings, then ten percent is six point five rooms. So that's a great place to, to start. If, if we have to go, you know, expand the footprint ten percent, then that's six, six or seven classrooms, right? So that's the next, so this is an iterative process. So it's not just, we can't do it the way it is now. Yeah. Okay. That's, that might be obvious, but what's the next step?
So I'm going to interject one thing and then it's absolutely your turn. The one question we have not answered is what is our vision? If our vision is to provide the best pathways for all of our students and one of the thoughts is to take Maker Space, bring it over here, CT, then we do not have the space for seventh and eighth grade. We need to decide what do we want for Sao Hegan and our students here before we try and put seventh and eighth grade in. What if we want some, that room for something else? We're, we're trying to shove something down before we have answered the vision question, what we want that is best for our students. And that's the question that's been answered first. John?
Any conversation that we have about what is our space and how we're using it needs to include every room in every building that exists on the campus. No room is excluded. Basic, here's a room. It's forty-nine square foot. It's a water closet. Okay. That's never going to change. Here's a room. It's nine hundred and sixty square feet. Facts room and it's excluded. What, what, gee, hmm, what could we do there? To your point, that needs to be understood. Number two. I did my analysis on the available information, sixteen rooms. The current use is unknown. And in the annex alone, there are, um, or, well, yeah, there's a sixteen hundred feet, square feet of space where there's a discrepancy between two pieces of information that the, that I was able to obtain from, uh, uh, SAU School District sources. Okay. That's a problem. We don't even know what we've got. So to draw conclusions, Anna, or to, and, or to not take an iterative approach, to even be able to have the conversation about what our vision for our space is, we have to understand actually what our space is, which we don't. I've been trying to get this information so that we could present it and say, okay, well, at least here's a common set of facts. Now we can have the conversation about, gee, how is this space used? How is that space used? Does it work? Does it work? What, what solutions? How would we make it work? But we can't even begin to move those pieces around because we don't have the basic information. So I would like us to direct our administrators to, to provide, I, I've asked her two, two questions and I could read them to you. If you, if you agree, I'd like to.
I asked you to bring them to the meeting tonight. So you can go ahead and read them and see if we can go forward, right? Because I said, bring it under your business. So, go for it.
Okay. Number one, meet with me, Dan and Roger Preston and anyone else who wants to come at Sao Hegan to verify current floor plans and current room use. Estimated time, two hours or so. Materials needed. Floor plans with every room legibly shown, shown with square footage. Questions, can such plans be provided electronically well in advance of, of the meeting? Can such plans be provided electronically in both PDF and CAD formats? What time slots are available for Roger within the next week or so? The only thing I'd add to that is make sure he has a, a key, enough keys so we can open up all the rooms and we can figure out what's going on. Number two, oh, receive the master schedule, which we did. Including rooms, uh, uh, let's see, receive the current master schedule in a format that readily enables analysis of every period during the week. Including which rooms are used for which classes or purposes. We got the classroom use, but not the purposes used. And maybe that's not in the master schedule. So that is, what do we have? How are we using it? And is the, the master schedule analysis is talking about what we are currently doing as classroom space and not incorporating all of our educational space. That's what I think we need to understand. And I would like this board to, to help us get, gain that information. So that when we ask a question like, what would it take to put seventh and eighth grade into the cooperative and under the campus? We actually have a foundation of what we can look at and answer. And maybe the conclusion is we can't do it without putting a shovel in the ground or at, or spending some money on portable, portables or something. Or maybe other school districts look at that and be like, no, we don't really want to participate. It's not a good solution. But I can guarantee you this, it's not a be, going to be a fifty-four million dollar bond over a hundred million dollars, uh, with interest. That's going to be that solution. I'm just saying, we can make an impact on student. I'm just saying, we can make an impact on student success, we can do it in a fiscally responsible way, and we can demonstrate good governance by having all students represented by their elected representative. If we choose to do so.
So before, so John is asking for some information. Here's my, here's my concern is, again, if we're, we need to figure out as a board what we want our vision to be, and again, this is a different, this is not to be settled tonight, right, because we can't do that here. But if we decide we want to go forward using, you know, we want to provide experience, and maybe again, it's CTE, maybe it's something else. We're not gonna go through that detail analysis and micromanage every single square foot in this building, that is not our job to micromanage every single square foot. Our job is to have a vision, put policies in place, and make sure administration has a budget in order to follow the vision that we're asking them to do. Now, the problem is, you're still trying to put something eighth grade in before we even know if that's really what everybody here wants. And what the community wants, it's really, it's what does the community want? What do we want? So we could ask to spend time with Roger if we want to give him the two plus hours to go over all this stuff. Is that the best use of his time? Do we want?
Could we do something simplified? Like, Mike, presumably you and the people who did this know what the rooms were that you counted? Right, so, and I I don't remember what the number is, but we got X rooms. Someone take a half an hour and walk through the school, this is one, this is two, this is three, this is four. We did not count this space, it's a closet, this is five, this is six, this common room is seven, this is eight. You know, we did not count these two bathrooms, you know? I mean, like in a much abbreviated version, because the the idea of making someone come up with plans of the school and every room and the square footage, and where did this all come from? I mean, we got a school year to finish. You know, we got kids to graduate, we got work to do, and that is not how I want everybody spending their time, that's just my personal opinion. But if they're getting, you know, if they're getting walked around, you could look at a space and say, okay, this counted as one classroom, and in my personal opinion, and I mean, they've all got numbers on them, room two thirty eight could be broken into four. And but remember, you're still gonna have to find over thirteen rooms for period one here in order to open up the annex, and that's gonna be with every single classroom full, once you've found those additional thirteen rooms. And I disagree that we know it's gonna be less, because if there's gonna be an addition that has to be built here, and there has to be a remodeling and a fixing of everything that's broken at AMS, and there's gonna have to be a remodeling and a fixing of everything that's broken at Amherst. That's gonna add up to a lot of money, and I, I think, I think it's a huge leap to say, we could add all that on here without it, and and the total cost would now be less than whatever. And maybe it would, I mean, maybe it would be less than that individual bond, but I just, I don't see it. But would that work, would that work for you and Dan, like just a walkthrough of these are the rooms we counted? And then you can walk by and be like, how come there's these thousand of feet that weren't counted, and we can have a discussion about that.
Sunny.
So I, I have an amazing husband, um, he deals a lot with numbers and facts, and he needs things written down, he wants to study things and look at them, I have a vision, you know? That's what I want to do, I want to talk about what I, you know, like, the future and our, like, so my point is we're both right, he's right, and I'm right, and I feel like this is kind of like my marriage, um. You know, uh, I think everybody's right, I, I think you gotta meet in the middle, um, I think some of us need numbers. You know, um, and things written down, you know, you want to look at stuff and and see it, you know, like, see it.
Right.
Um, and and I want to talk about, you know, um, the, the vision for the future, you know, and and how that plays out about how we're gonna use that space that you want to physically know about, and and I just, I feel like everyone's right, no one's wrong, and and if we could meet in the middle. You know?
Yeah. To me, it's like, it's, it's making the case that satisfies the voters.
But, but I, I think that we need to do what's best for us. Like, we need to come together, we need to have a vision, we need to know what we want to do with extra space if we have it.
There's, there's a segment of voters who who voted against it, because they felt the high school was empty. And that we, we were hoarding space and that the the Amherst School Board was, was, you know, being selfish and not entertaining the the offer to to take advantage of that space. So we need to say, you know, hey, if we're gonna do this, then we no longer have the learning commons, we no longer have the school store, we no longer have, what do we, once we get past what rooms are empty, we have to decide what rooms are we gonna empty out.
But we.
You know, and that may be too, that may be too far to go for a lot of people, but that's, that's part of the iterative process. I, I, you know, I'm not saying I want to close the school store, I'm not saying I want to break up the learning commons and put it back as classrooms. But, you know, these are things that unless we're gonna put a twenty room, twenty schoolroom addition, and a new gym, and a cafeteria on the building, these are the things that, you know, we are part of the, part of the package, you know? So to, to, to the voters who who wouldn't vote for the, the Wilkins Project, because they thought the, the high school was empty, this is the answer to that. You know, no, it's not, it's not configured in a way that that can accommodate that today. And if we, it, it's gonna hurt a little bit if we, if we try to do this as it is now, and without an addition, and the addition is gonna cost money, maybe, um, maybe the addition could make the pro, you know, the Wilkins Project so small that we would, you know, fifty four million dollars would be the most we would spend at all three schools. But that's, you know, we haven't made that case, and we don't even have those numbers, so.
But we don't have a vision.
That's, that's the big vision, and, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a process, I think we have to go through whether.
Maybe we could all agree on something.
Yeah, it's a process, it's a process that I think, think has value as part of our vision, I think that two independent, they can be two independent things. It, understanding what's, how the school is utilized is an important thing, I think it's part of, part of our responsibility as a budgeting, in a budgeting process, is knowing what's available, what's there, and, you know, what space is empty space, because that has a cost to it. You know, it, we still have to heat the building, we still have to, you know, keep the classrooms clean, and they're, you know, they're not used, we can't just mothball them, so there is a cost to it. Um, we need to understand that, and I think it's an, it's a part of the process of being, of visualizing who we are.
Yeah, how do you feel about the idea of instead of give us a whole bunch more paperwork and go do a bunch more work, a walkthrough? This is what was counted, this wasn't what was counted.
It needs to be, it needs to be a high level.
Take pictures if you want to help remember.
It needs to be a high level until, because we can't spend a lot of time and money on this, until, until we get buy-in from the other two districts.
Correct.
They can, if any, either one of them says, no, this is dead in the water, and we're, we're moving on to the, the other things, we're looking at the preschool and.
I think we need a vision, because, again, why would we give away space if we have a way we want to use it, so? Um.
Because the community, I mean, the only reason is.
Right, but.
Community wants us to look at it, so that's.
But that's part of the vision conversation, so anyway, I don't want to keep this, this is, this could go on all, all night. Um, lots of, lots of feelings, lots of thoughts, um, so the discussion Monday is going to be lively, I want everyone, make sure everyone's going to be respectful. Um, we're going to have to figure out a way forward um, coming out of that meeting, and it might include, you know, Sauhegan looking at what our vision is. It might include um, looking at seventh and eighth grade going in, it might include who knows what, but I'm just gonna ask for everyone to be very respectful for Monday, but I think having this discussion tonight at least puts stuff on the table for people to hear. I know we, we're not solidified, we're not gonna come together tonight in an, in any way, but, um.
Maybe we can come together in a small way, to your point. Um. Respectful of Roger's time, he has the keys and he has plans.
Yeah, he's, he's, um.
One of, one of his people has access to where the plans are, we did a tour last year, was great, he was great. Yep, got some floor plans, okay? Um, they don't have all the information on them, I asked him at the end of that, he had as-built drawings for the buildings, he said that he did somewhere in his engineering shop, I don't know where that is. He didn't say engineering shop, but somewhere in his office areas. Okay, let's have access to that, let's look at those, should have the square footages on them, I would volunteer my own time to record that information into a spreadsheet and rely on it, we can all rely on that. I'll take photographs of them to back up and show documentation. Somebody with a key could give us another tour, but with a more specific purpose, which is to check off the room, okay, classroom, yes, valid, veri- verify, verify, oh, here's a big room, oh, it's, it's now it's a storage closet, gee, do, okay, now, now there's some questions, questions are answered, and we know the size of these things. I, I would like to get us to gather that baseline data, so that when we talk about our vision, if we talk about moving things around and blah, 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 that we actually have some basis for it. I don't think that's a very ask, I don't think it takes a lot of time on the administration's level.
Can I, can I shorten that process potentially by saying, you said there's a number of rooms you say that are unaccounted for? That you know, that you have, but are not on Mike's list, can we just go through those?
There's two problems. There's square footage discrepancies between different source material.
But does, does square footage matter in just the discussion we're saying, number of classrooms right now?
Absolutely.
What are you go, are you going to make, here's my pro, my concern, John, you're micromanaging the process of how many students are gonna sit in a classroom, you're gonna say, well, this AP class can go here instead of here, and this twenty four person class is gonna go here instead of there, that's micromanaging something that we are way out of line if we start doing that.
The problem with this is you, everyone's jumping to a conclusion. It's impossible to draw a conclusion if you don't have a basis of fact. I'm asking, let's get a basis of fact, administration will know how much space they have, they don't currently, that's good for them. We will know, we can then govern and make decisions based on how we're gonna use the space, how we're gonna direct our vision, and that will inform them about how to do their, their jobs. With their input, with the feedback.
John, I do not need the square footage space to say how many classes are gonna be in this classroom and that classroom, that is way beyond what our level of detail is.
It's more than that.
Isn't, isn't that, isn't that the way that this?
No, no.
Vision, we set the goals.
Need square footage.
Setting vision, setting visions and setting goals is not micromanaging.
No, but when you're asking for square footage of a room, because you think one class is gonna go there instead of there, because there's space available, is micromanaging something that is beyond what is our, our, our point?
Or you're completely reconfiguring the school, because, I mean, I've got a certain amount of square feet in my house. But that doesn't mean without significant remodeling, I can all of a sudden make my dining room and living room four bedrooms. I mean, I, you know, it, it, so knowing the square feet and knowing that there's enough square feet there where that could happen is, is useless. I mean, what you need to know is, I mean, sure, if I was a complete idiot and I thought my house was two thousand square feet and it was really eight thousand, maybe there'd be a problem. But whether it's two thousand or twenty one hundred or twenty one five, I mean, you're talking about on the margins, Mike doesn't need to know how many square feet the building is to know how many classrooms he has, how full the classrooms are, how much the classrooms are being used. So I, I guess I don't understand why the square, I mean, if, I think, I think it'd be fine to say, if Roger's got these plans, fine, give you access to the plans, if they exist, I don't want them creating anything, but if they exist, fine, go look at the plans. And then do your walkthrough, but, but figure out what you think is missing, and not on the basis of because X feet should fit here, because, nah, just because there's forty seven rooms here, and I, and only thirty eight are accounted for, I don't know.
So if I may, just, John, I'm really having a hard time following your train of thought on this topic, because it's going way around and doing weird things. What specifically are you looking for with these rooms that you're saying are not represented in the report? That's what I want to hear.
I appreciate the question, and let me rephrase this, so I clearly upset everyone in the room, seemingly. I, when I looked, tried to say, okay, what space do we have, simple question, I found that we don't know. I don't mean we as board members, the, the whole system doesn't know, because there are various uh, sources of information that have different information.
So if I may, what do you mean by we don't know, though? That's the part where I'm not tracking, what don't we know?
Information do you rely on? I mean.
We know how many classrooms we have, you're talking about, because they didn't put division one and division two in there, which.
No, that's not what I'm talking about, Stephanie.
Well, that's what we want to know, yeah, I'm trying to understand what don't we know?
I noticed discrepancy in the source documents, so now I just, I'm, what I'm saying is, hey.
Like what?
Resolve it.
Like, what's the discrepancy?
Sixteen hundred square feet.
Okay.
That difference, that's a lot. That's a lot of educational space. Okay, uh, twenty, what did I say, twenty eight classroom, twenty eight, not, sorry, not twenty eight classroom, twenty eight rooms where I don't know what it's currently being used at. I have a list, and I think it was worth our time to go, but what I would like to do endeavor, if I'm only one volunteering to do this, is resolve those conflicts in our data set. That is it, whatever we decide to have conversations, however we decide to govern or manage, and all the things that flow there from is something for a future discussion. This, in my view, is the basis and foundation for having that, those discussions. It will support.
So you're thinking we're gonna discover classrooms we don't have? That's my question, is that what you're looking for, classrooms that we?
I think that to Dan's point, from, as far as the state is concerned, every square foot in the building, or whatever you said, not every square foot, what was it that you said about? About what the state views as educational space in a, in a, in a, in a school? Could you repeat what that was?
That educational space, like classrooms, laboratories, uh, libraries and gyms, anyplace where a student can be assigned.
Anywhere where a student can be assigned, right.
Educational day, so.
Yeah, I wanna, I, I wanna see with, you know, and that, and who you, how many students you can assign to a particular spot, it depends on the square footage of the space, you're not gonna spit like the.
Again, are we micromanaging that?
But, but if it, to, to what Stephanie's saying, it's like, we're not gonna put thirty kids in a, in a social studies class, because the room is big enough, but we, you know, I think the, the administration, looking at the, the data, they've, they've done a good job of right sizing the classrooms to the room, the classes.
Yeah.
And class enrollment to the rooms. Um, what I think you're questioning is, like, how big is the, uh, like, the, the school store, can, you know, obviously that can be put to another use, but that's something we're giving up, these are things that, you know, these are rooms that are probably utilized in another way. Maybe there were totally always support spaces, and they're not technically educational space, and there's no right to, to convert them otherwise. But, you know, to your, to be fair to you, that we should understand those spaces as well, and know why they're being excluded from, from the count. Um, but again, I mean, this is all moot if the other two districts don't want to go, don't want to go along with it, and it's moot if we decide we don't want to offer it, you know, if and it, you know, this is something that we need to decide as a board, and it's something that we, we haven't really discussed and voted on as a board. You know, if we, if we say today, or at a future meeting that, you know, hey, this is a great idea, but it's not right for this school. That's the end of it, that's, that's it, I, I'm cool with that, I'm, I'm cool with looking at a CTE or an engineering program using the maker space and finding other ways to alleviate some of the space issues at, at AMS that benefit us as well, and and not trying to force the square peg into a round hole. Because this, this is, this is gonna take a lot of work, we move seventh and eighth grade in here, and I'm not discounting that at all. I mean, to Stephen's point, it's gonna take a lot of legal work to, to work through any union issues with it, it's gonna take construction, it's gonna take engineers and, and architects, and, you know, it's a heavy lift, if we can do it another way and and people are on board, and it gets, satisfies the community that we're doing the best we can with what the space we have, and it gets us to another point next spring and in, in, in the next election. I'm happy with that, you know, this is to, to kind of check the boxes in, in our due diligence, in my mind. And, you know, how it ends up, I, I, you know, I can't, I won't you know, have a preference in that, I just want to be able to do the work and and check that box and you know, satisfy the public, that we've, that we've done that due diligence, and we've done that work, that's my, my goal in this. How we end up is, you know, where the numbers point us.
Right, okay.
I don't have any conclusions about where we end up. I have a hypothesis. Can't test it if I don't have the basic facts. So that's where I'm struggling right now. And it's been hard to get the facts. I don't think it's a big, a big lift to get the fact, I appreciate the lift for the master schedule analysis, I really do. Um, but it's not all, it's all, not all what's needed, so.
What did I say? Simple. Comment real fast, in terms of that, and then hopefully we can wrap this conversation up, because the night's getting very long. John, I think what you're looking for is you're really looking for a professional study to go in and analyze space needs inside this building, and whether or not we can go ahead and integrate a school system into this building, meaning our seventh and eighth grade students, that's what I'm hearing, but we're not using those words. Because you're saying that we can use this space here, we can use this space here, administration's already told us. Because you're saying that we can use this space here, we can use this space here. Administration's already told us that we have X Y Z amount of spaces or classrooms open. At any given point in time throughout the particular day. Um, Dan and and Stephanie have done further analysis to either. You know, move the needle one way or the other and there's no space here. And what you're asking, what I'm thinking you're asking is we need to dive deeper into that 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 analysis to say, you know what? There is space with inside this building because we have to look harder. And we are not trusting all the the partners that are actually presenting us with the information to say, yeah, there is no space. And so we want to go out and find an independent entity that can come in at cost from my perspective. Uh, to then say, yeah, John, there is, or John, there isn't space. Because if you go and do the analysis on your own. Does that mean the six other members of this board are gonna listen to your analysis? And if Dan comes to the table, is five other members of the board gonna listen to Dan's analysis? Well, the answer is probably someone's gonna be questioning it, just like you're doing right now. And so the only way that I think we can truly resolve the question that you've got is for us to say, let's take an independent party. That's skilled in in the trade of building allocation and generate a report that can say, you know what? So we can school board, I believe that there is or isn't space. That's what I'm hearing.
But so I hear what you're saying and my concern there again is we need to know how we want to deliver the education we're delivering. So I can't even ask them to look at that unless I tell them that. So I. My my thoughts are, we come in Monday, we have the discussions, we can still, everyone, you know, needs to put their vision out there, whatever it is, to have this discussion that will be. Happen. We need to figure out a path forward for ourselves as well. And that means we need to figure out how to have that vision conversation. So I need to. Wrap my head around what that might look like. I'm gonna have to have discussions with. I just need help wrapping my head around that. So.
How does that affect Monday?
It's not gonna affect Monday. Then I'm gonna say we need to figure out for ourselves what we want to deliver the education because. I'm not sure I want to offer this.
Yes, you know, I worry I worry about this, you know, it's like where where is the cart and where is the horse and.
Correct.
You know, it's like.
And that's why Monday's gonna be really, we can't answer that question of what our vision is, how we want to, how to deliver our education. It's gonna be like, oh. It's gonna be a very awkward conversation. I think it is.
I agree. Can we, can I make a motion that we move on to the next agenda?
Okay.
Can I make a motion to close debate on that? Can I say that?
Yeah, yeah, we're moving on. But anyway, please be respectful. I'm gonna wrap my head around the vision thing. We'll bring it back to the next school board meeting about what that means and it's gonna, everything's gonna be in. Up in the air in the meantime, so I'm sorry about that, but I appreciate everyone having a discussion tonight because. Everyone needs to hear the thoughts of where we are and have this because we've not had this hard discussion in public. So I appreciate that.
Something's unclear. Is it, is anyone opposed to me reviewing the as-built construction drawings or whatever equivalents they have? Whatever file box they're in and walking around the schools with someone with a key to understand and satisfy.
John, when when Roger comes back from his leave, yes, we'll get, we'll talk to him and get plans to you and you can look at the plans and get, put that stuff together. But he's on leave and we don't.
We don't know when he's coming. Do we have the estimate on when he may be back?
Yeah, this is right. We need to stop having this conversation. Well, I have no idea what the issue is, but you know.
Okay.
Whether or not someone's on.
He's he's the one that understands how to read them, read the plans and locate the right plan. So I'd rather that he provide the correct information. Is that all right? And he gets back.
Yes.
We will get a date.
Better than. Previously, so.
Okay.
I accept progress.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, we do.
Steph, I know you all are ready to move on, but I'm like abandoned here in La La Land. Um, there is always the option. I mean, if you are bound and determined to beat this horse until it melts into the dirt. You can take the money that we have available and you can spend gobs of money to study this thing out one more time. So you could certainly call for that vote. That is how he can only vote. Then you'd have a funded situation versus this unfunded situation.
I appreciate that comment, but I'm not sure we're in a position to ask for any study to be done if we don't know what we want it. What we're, information we would provide to say how we're utilizing the space or going to utilize the space in the future based on whatever vision we have. So I'd rather hold off on that.
I also am not looking to spend district resources other than. Volunteer time myself and a little bit of administrative time to assist.
As a member of this board, I don't care if you take the motion now or not, Steph. I just don't understand how we continue to have the same conversation over and over and I actually feel like we've gone backwards with this conversation. So I think you all need to set a timeline for when you think this conversation is going to be done.
Yep.
You can't just say like, it it'll be done when it's done because as we get, we get one layer done and we're like, yep, we've got it now. I mean, we can see that this doesn't work space-wise. Let's dig a little deeper. And I feel like we're looking for like a wardrobe to Narnia somewhere in this building. Um, anyway, I I just think you should set a timeline on this.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Christie.
I'm gonna wrap my head around this and next board meeting we'll hopefully have something to discuss. Okay. I don't think we need a motion. I'm moving on now. Um, unassigned fund, unassigned fund balance and end of year projects.
Sure, it's May. Um, and so we are closing to the end of the year and part of the end of the year process is take a look at where we are in fund balance. And see if there's capacity to take a look at some of our our projects. Um, so just a quick reminder that in a successful. Um, deliberative and and voting session, we committed and passed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the main experimentable trust. Seventy thousand dollars uh to the turf field, twenty-five thousand for a new technology fund. And during the budget process, when we were talking about tax rate and tax impact, we committed six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reduce the tax impact. That sum total is nine hundred and sixty-five thousand. Everybody with me?
Yeah.
So if we have excess funds above nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, that can come to the board then to to either increase. Um, return and impact the tax rate or um do some significant work on on facilities or other items. Um, so as uh we have worked with Roger when he was here and the leadership team and Mike and and his staff. Can we either start to look at some priorities? Now, we don't know, right now, the the fund balance projected is nine hundred and fifty-six thousand. So we're in the vicinity of meeting our obligation. We feel really good about that. Is there going to be significant money left over? We're monitoring it when we come back, but one of the projects that if, for example, there is forty-one thousand dollars above the nine sixty-five. You with me?
Yep.
Then the recommendation would be to take a look at repeaters to improve better cell service. This came actually. And I talked about this a long time ago during a listening, post-listening session, one of the things to improve and and Mike has heard this from his staff. Um, so if we had money left over, that would be our 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 first priorities. Oh, the second part, I think it might have been thirty K. I think I might have typo'd that one. Forty, one of them was forty, but the next level would be to continue to work on furniture replacements. We do have some in the budget, but to accelerate that. And then the last, if we, this was about, you know, a little over a hundred, hundred and twenty-ish is our first salvo would be to work on the theater and the stage and the rigging and the winches that is due for replacement. Um, so that is just our our first tier, if you will. Um, so again, we're at nine fifty-six. We need nine sixty-five to meet our obligation. Yay, that's really good. It was an estimate. It's hard to estimate this stuff, but we're in good shape on the estimate. We have money above. We talk about cell service, furniture, and then continue to improvements and repair through our theater. Um, June is decision time, so we'll bring some more in June um to pull the trigger because we want to uh have an action on it from the board to expend funds prior. To the end of the pistol.
Can I ask one thing to potentially look at? I noticed when I was there at the Spring Musical, one of a, one of the curtains had a big tear in it. Can we look at the cost of replacing that and throw that?
We sure can.
So it's available for next school year because it looks really bad.
And and curtains aren't cheap.
No, they're not.
Be fire retardant.
I know, so we can just find out what that is and if it's.
And let's see where it was.
I think that was on the list.
We have it on the list, uh, and. We've uh put some money into a bunch of the other curtains.
Yeah. But it's like right in front of people and it's.
When we create this list, we're trying to think that impact the most people.
I know.
And 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 that's where, that's on our list, but as we looked at it, most, most students, most staff. Um, and and it's pretty, it's pretty telling that if I have to call Steve Chamberlain from my cellphone, I have to go out to the tree.
I know, right?
Right, like I can't make a phone call from my cellphone from this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
And and so.
It's not helping.
Wild in two thousand twenty-three in Amass.
And it's getting worse because of.
So they, I think that was, you're right about the curtain. It does look awful. It is on the list.
And and I had this vision of rigging, which is things falling on people's heads.
I bet, well, that's that's a priority.
The rigging and which is went above the screen. That's true in this world, but that's the vision I had for it, so.
Can I ask a question? Can the Esther funds or any of the grant money be used for the repeaters as a public safety measure? Because in a situation, nobody can make a call, nobody can receive a call, that's a serious security risk.
So um, our, when we we submitted grants to the last round of of security measures. And um, I did not see any like um grants. And the awards were on a mostly controlled access, but we can look. Um, but and when I did happen to review all the successful grants, I was just curious and I didn't see anybody, but we can certainly look and see.
Are you thinking that's their money left over?
What was it?
Yeah, it wouldn't qualify for.
Is that, I don't think it was communication qualified, but.
That is, it's facilitating communication. If there's a nixle sent out by administration, get out of the building. No one in the building can actually get that nixle, right? On their cell phones anyway. So I think there's an argument at least to be made that it's a communication piece.
We submitted and got approved, obviously, but the key card's here.
Right.
Right? Um, um, we didn't submit, to be honest, we looked at it as a, not an emergency piece. We looked at it as a as a communication piece, but we can absolutely look at that and I can go back and look and see if anybody has done that. We can, that would, that would, that would be a waiting period.
You have committed the Esther funding issue. For students, for student support.
Right, I like that.
I don't, I think.
Oh, no, you're talking about the safety grant, not the. Oh, no, Esther money?
Esther three, like a hundred and ninety-four.
Dinner yet? And I've been at work since seven thirty this morning.
Really good.
I try to move some of this along before I get really cranky.
Okay, my my point is only, I love your list, okay? And I I'd love to do all of it. Um, so to the extent that there's a reason like for safety and security, and I know we have grants for that kind of thing. Maybe you can't answer it now. We don't have to go on to Hannah's point. Please look into it so we can do all the.
Happy to look at the, what we did, we were successful in something in other districts, looking into security, but not the S S grant. But the security grants.
But we've already been awarded.
Right, that would be. Right, and that would take another year. That would take another year if they reopen. If they reopen, then we could apply.
Right.
That would be a waiting period for that.
Yeah, I don't want to get your hopes up right now.
Okay, no problem.
All right, thank you. All right.
Do you charge? Um, do you have a phone charger with him? I got a cable.
What does she have? You have a.
Try it.
Is it an iPhone?
Do you need a cable, the USB C?
iPhone? Is it an iPhone?
All right, good work.
That's, yeah. Okay, um, anything else on unreserved fund balance that we'll come back to?
More stuff.
Okay. Staffing nominations or anything we need to do on public at all for that?
It's up to you. No, um.
Those are just the ones.
Actually, this is codification on the hiring is the codification of what we've done.
Okay.
Um, plus, um, a a school counselor, Megan Worcester was the one added fresh that you haven't seen before.
Okay.
I'm gonna run through real quick.
Yes.
Just to codify what we saw, we've hired, uh, uh, coming forward to codify is Jessica Minot, a French teacher. Christine Gassetto, a math teacher, Marissa Lerner Lamb, a Spanish teacher, Andrew Tyler, a technology teacher. Wendy Williams, a fresh, a French teacher. And one that you haven't seen before is Megan Worcester was currently an intern um through the program at Rivier College. Um, is coming forward tonight as a school counselor.
So she's fresh out of college?
Um, oh, no, she's worked.
No, she has. Okay, that's what I was trying to understand where she was.
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
So that's the hiring piece. And then just for the resignation piece, just for the board to accept. Um, an action from both these, of course, with 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 regret for appreciation. Adam Terrio, a technology teacher, has submitted his letter of resignation. Joe Monday, a music instructor and director, has admitted his letter of resignation. Pam Ilg, a school counselor, has submitted her letter of resignation. And one that wasn't in the board notes because they got it in duration is Nikki Murray, school psychologist, who submitted.
Steve, can I add something?
Please.
Can we pull Pam Ilg momentarily?
Oh, right, because.
Yep, 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 because we had a a withdrawal and.
Thank you. So uh, we won't accept Pam's. Pam was gracious enough, but I remember I did form a board note that we had a withdrawal.
Okay.
So we're gonna see what the pool looks like um before. So with, um, so Adam, Joe and Nikki. Tonight, except for resignations and the others. Everybody with me? Sorry about that.
That's my, my bad. I should have reminded you.
All good. We're working through it. So I need an action item to accept the resignations and nominations as presented.
So moved.
All right, let's have a second.
Second, and I have one very quick question.
Yes.
When you give us the spreadsheet, since it says salary replacement, budget impact, and the number's a positive number, that's actually a.
A good for us savings.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right.
Winter winner chicken dinner.
First time I looked at that, I thought they were all going up.
We don't do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion? And we need to do a roll call vote since Christie's remote. Mr. O'Keefe.
O'Keefe, yes.
Yeah, you, yes.
Friend, yes.
Lisa Mummon, yes.
Lover, yes.
Daniels, yes.
Christie?
You.
Peters, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's two policies. Is there? Let me get to the policies because they are all the way at the bottom. Policies are two. Make sure, so policy G B E D prohibitions regarding use of tobacco products, e-cigarettes and e-liquids in and on school facilities and grounds. Um, that is up for approval. Are there any questions or discussions on that one?
Is it the first reading? Didn't we read these last time? Am I wrong on that?
No, is this where the S A U are?
Okay, that's what I'm thinking. I'm sorry.
Um, and then professional staffing, G C F. Any questions on that one?
No.
Any questions? None? All right, can, so it's a first reading, so we don't have to really do any motions or anything on that. Um, they will come up next meeting for.
Got it.
Approval. Moving on. Um, let's do, uh, let me ask, is there any new business that people want on a next agenda?
Yes.
Mr. Lover.
I think it's time that we need to start being prepared for P P C negotiations.
Yes.
Um, there's a few things that we need, that again, it's the same theme, baseline information so we can have, understand where we're starting from. So that we can understand what our vision is going to be and how we're gonna negotiate to to implement that. I think this is very similar to the facilities conversation. So, for example.
Um, so John, I'm just gonna interrupt you. We're going to put that in during our summer retreat to have that discussion. So we'll be prepared. So everyone has input and say, and you'll have the policies that are in play for that retreat discussion.
And in the, in advance of that, then I would like us all to receive what people believe.
Are the policies.
Defines the P P C.
Yes. Absolutely, hundred percent.
Which policies were proposed?
Yes. Yep.
Uh, yes, and I assume one hundred percent of the P P C policies are potentially up for negotiation, although. In practical terms, only a small fraction of them are typically actually negotiated. Understand the difference?
Two.
There's.
Yeah, well, because there's ones like you're talking, the um, the 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 principal review process is in P P C discussion now. How, what they want that process to look like, which is is a policy, but is that really up for negotiations? Versus the salary one and the other. So that's the question you're asking.
Guess, I guess maybe it's a two-part question then. Think we would all benefit from knowing. What are the four corners of the P P C agreement that govern our relationship with our staff or subject to the P P C, number one? Number two is what subset of that, if any, is negotiable uh in a, in the P P C negotiations as opposed to. I guess. guess what, not negotiable? I guess they're, I guess all of the policies are negotiable at some point because there's a process for them to provide input on the policies.
Yes.
So yes, I'd like to understand. We would all benefit from knowing.
Because it's, this is new. I mean, this is.
How that is structured.
All of us sitting on the board are in a PPC negotiation here. So, um, not, one of us has been. And that, yeah, you have. But that is absolutely a fair question to have all of that defined and that will be, and we, we just, we, um, I thought about and asked about putting it on the June and he said it'll be an entire discussion for the June. On.
Board meeting.
For the, or the June.
Non-public.
Or when, I'm sorry, the summer retreat, whenever that is, so we can have multiple hours potentially to discuss it.
Might need more than one retreat.
Well, it's the idea of.
Um, had mentioned that.
I, I, I think an open discussion in that kind of format. And typically when you test negotiations, it's considered a non-meeting.
Yeah, council, council be present.
I.
Typically, oh, no.
They don't.
No, we don't need that in the first instance.
No, no.
But the non-meeting is nominating.
Right.
Negotiations.
Right.
Yes. So yes, I, I think it's absolutely fair. We will, we will put out what is everything that's under PPC and what typically is under a negotiation for PPC.
Okay.
Fair question.
Um, I would like to remind, I'd like administration to remind us about what instructional time we currently have versus and also as that compares to our ideal amount of instructional time. Um, I'd like to have us to have some more, um, uh, not discussion, disclosure, I guess, of, of what the currently contemplated vision for the guidance department is at the high school. I'd like, and, and this doesn't necessarily be at the next meeting. I mean.
Yeah.
Um, the instructional time I would like at the next meeting, possible. I'd like to, I'd like to know a presentation of what we're doing with our alumni program. Um, and the reason is, I know sometimes I ask for information, they read, I get why you want the information. Reason is, we're trying to paint a portrait of the graduate, yet we're neglecting no data on how we've done. So I'd like to understand what we're doing to communicate with our alumni and perhaps not micromanage it, but provide some feedback to perhaps improve it along the way. I'd like to know the basis and foundation of why we're contemplating changing our, our graduation requirements and I'm not really have a good handle on that.
Well, that, that's supposed to be brought to us if there are going to be any changes. So that would be on an agenda.
Oh.
It's being, if, if it's bringing brought forward. There was discussion about it. I don't know what's actually coming forward and what. Well, I, I want, is there, I thought you said it's short. It's, how many more do you have, John? Because I thought. Is it a long list? Is it a long list?
No.
Send it to me. Send.
No.
John, send it to me, please. Okay? Just, John, send it to me. Okay?
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Sorry for the public. You don't have the benefit of my notes.
Um, before we go into non-public, so we can at least do the community council people. Uh, public input. There's a second public inputs if you're interested.
Okay, Lucy Eastland, uh, Amherst. Um, I was just going to talk about project graduation, but there was a lot of conversation and as a community member, I made some notes that, about that whole discussion about the buildings and whatever. As a community member, what is important to me and when I hear from other people is the delivery of education. The type of education and where we are going as a school is of utmost importance. Because we went from like number eight or nine on, uh, in the state of a high school to number nineteen. That was a huge drop and we cannot just blame that on the pandemic because every kid in the state, every kid in the world was affected by that. I want and other people want, when we're asked to spend a kajillion dollars on this school, we want to be able to see that our money is buying us something. And that's a crass way to put a delivery of education, but that is kind of what we're doing. So to go on about other things, which brings me to when you ask as a board member to double check data given to you by the principal and his, that has been collected by he and his staff, and you are focusing on data that is one to two percent of the entire square footage of this entire two complex of two buildings appears as if you do not trust this man and his staff, and that may or may not be the message you send. But as a community member, I'm sitting here and it is disconcerting to me to hear a school board member. And I'll use Stephanie's words, micromanage, it implies a level of distrust. And if a school board member is sitting here kind of relaying to me that you don't trust what is being given to you, I'm worried and I'm not sure that's the message you want to send. Maybe it is. I don't know, but that is the message that was received by me. Now, on a project graduation, happy things, those are great. Should have mentioned it after the whole book thing when everybody was listening, but it is coming up on Friday, June second, the night of graduation. It is going to be here, held here at the school from nine until midnight. We have parents dropping kids off. Parents are required to pick them up. We have our SRO out there verifying. Um, it's going to be a great time. It's our normal thing. We think that the vision and the mission of project graduation is still being met. Meaning that kids aren't out driving on the road late at night. They're not, it's a safe, drug-free, fun evening. And then they go home. Side benefit is for parents who have kid, who are throwing a party the next day, their kids are not exhausted by having the entire overnight lock-in experience that we used to have. Um, so we think that it's still being met that way. Having said that, we still need volunteers to help chaperone the event. We would love it if people wanted to throw some money our way. We never turn that down. And if anyone is listening or will see this later, for underclassmen parents, we need people to take over the year after because most of the committee have our babies sadly, bittersweetly graduating this year. Um, all of you all except for Ms. O'Keefe and Mrs. Grund are welcome to be chaperones if you would like. Would love to have some board members there. Um, but anyway, so if you have any questions about project graduation, project graduation, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for coordinating.
Thank you.
I know it's great for us.
It's going to be great.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hi, Matthew Black, Mont Vernon, um, to take us back to one of the lesser controversial i- issues of the evening, the book ban. Um, I wanted to, uh, check on me. Um, I thought I heard that the board had asked the superintendent to follow up with the gentleman who made the complaint, see whether there was a way that, that, uh, you know, settlement of, of the, the problem could be reached. And if so, I imagine that that would mean that there wouldn't be a need for a, a, a.
Correct.
A public discussion and a board decision. Okay?
Yeah.
So we haven't decided yet whether that will happen or not. Hopefully we'll find out.
Well, my guess is we'll know in the next day or two.
I got you. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, by Monday, I would say tomorrow's punky.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Try tomorrow.
I, I really, I, I'm on the same page with that man. I I, I think that, um, having something turn into a spectacle. Um, you know, I, I, I don't want that for my child. You know, I, I don't want that for any. Sorry.
Nope, always appreciate input. Always appreciate input. Um, anybody online that would like to speak?
No hands up.
No hands up. No, okay. Um, great. Uh, can I just have a motion? We're going to do the community council members hopefully quickly and we'll go home. I don't think there's anything else you need under.
You're not just the.
So, yeah, motion under our, yeah, on a non-public and RSA ninety-one, eight, colon, three, two, C.
I will make that motion.
Motion made. Seconds, real quick, roll call.
Yes.
But Dan?
David, yes.
Grund, yes.
Glazer, I mean, yes.
Glover, yes.
Sunny, yes.
And Christie, are you still with us? Okay. Yes, she said yes, yes.